Yourself muted, if you're not talking and if and avoid if you can offering comments or asking questions using the chat since that's typically not monitored and your comment or question may go unnoticed. If you are attending in person and you want to make a comment, please indicate to sentries. This way she can notify the chair and then when you're acknowledged by the chair, you can approach the podium at the front of the room and offer your comment, just please provide your name and municipality of residence prior to making any comments. Board members, if you're, if you can, please indicate your name when motioning or seconding a motion so that we can properly capture any action taken in the minutes. And since it looks like all the board members are are remote, I'm gonna take a roll call just to make sure that everybody can hear and interact using Zoom. So please indicate you're here when your name is called. Ms. Danini?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Mitra?
Here.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, ma'am chair. We have a quorum. Thank you.
And thank you, Dave. And as I do understand it, then sentries, we have a few folks that are attending in person this evening. Okay, great. Fantastic. Welcome, everyone. And let me also announce that we did have an executive session today on matters of personnel and litigation. And with that, I'll open it up to citizens input for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone who would like to speak, please let us know your name and your municipality of residence. And if possible, please limit your time to about five minutes. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on any matters on items not on the agenda? And sentries, are we seeing no one in the rooms wanting to speak? Okay, all right. Next up, I'll ask for an approval, a motion to approve the minutes of the August 2nd regular meeting and the August, or I'm sorry, the July 20th and 21st meetings for the capital improvement program. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, presented.
Yep.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. And first, a special report tonight, we'll have Ford Stryker for the State College Borough Water Authority Report. Welcome, Ford.
Oh, welcome in. Good evening, everybody. I have a very brief report. The Water Authority hasn't been too exciting lately, but I'll give you a quick update. And if there are any questions or there's a meeting, the board meets on Thursday of this week. So if there's anything that anybody would like me to take back to the the board, I'll be happy to convey your your comments. So the board does meet monthly. So far, all the meetings have been by Zoom. There's some discussion about going back to either in person or hybrid, but they haven't decided what they're going to do yet. One thing that's a little new is the the Water Authority is using the e-billing system. So if people want to pay your water bills by, you know, electronically, you can do it. It doesn't cost any extra. And they're trying to encourage all, you know, residents and customers to do that. So, you know, I just thought I'd I'd mention that tonight for for the thousands that are listening in. If anybody wants to use e-billing, it's it's an easy way to pay your bill. The other, another thing that may be of note is the authority is working with the regional solar power purchase agreement. And, you know, as that moves along, they intend to participate. And I think their goal is to purchase 100% of their power through that agreement whenever it becomes finalized. So I thought that you might find that interesting. I think you know, maybe the board members were were around when when this project was approved, but the Nixon Coker plant, the water treatment plant is making good progress. I understand there've been like two months or so of material delays because of the COVID and stuff, but they're they're still on making good progress and they expect to have that online operational by March of 2022. So it's not that far away. So that's good news. And they're they're making great progress there. On another project, it's maybe of some interest is they've been working to relocate the water lines at the 2645 intersection. And that's about completed. So so that's good news. That will allow the work to continue there. I I did talk to Brian Heiser, the executive, chief executive there today about a couple of things and one area that he wanted to need to mention, I guess, is there's some, they have some concern about a grading plan that's been submitted for the farm field that's at the vicinity of, or is the corner, I guess, of North Nixon Road and Old Gatesburg Road. I don't know if anybody's been over there in a while, but there's this gigantic pile of dirt there adjacent to that farm field. And I understand the owner submitted a grading plan to maybe construct or erect another large pile of dirt, which, you know, that's in a recharge area for the well field. And I think the you know, the Water Authority has some concerns about that. I'm not sure that there's anything that can be done because I from what I understand, the landowner may be well within his rights to do what he's doing, but you know, there was some concerns about that. So they're going to follow up and he just wanted me to make sure that the the supervisors were aware of that project. I I don't know if you are or not, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And then the the last item is they're they're working to understand the impact of the stormwater fee on their property. Apparently, this is maybe a mistake on my part, but I was assuming that, you know, as a utility, they would be exempted from the stormwater fee, but apparently they're not. So it's gonna, you know, increase their costs, they think. So they're still exploring that to see, you know, if there are any exemptions that are available to them, but that is something they're they're thinking about and concerned about. So with that, I'll conclude my report and see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you so much, Ford. That was a great report. It's always food for thought. I have a few comments, but I'm going to open it up to other board members first. Okay, so we are aware of the grading permit question. Staff, I'm sure could speak better to it, but my understanding is that's a permit through D P that's issued through the Conservation District. Not sure, but it's yes, somewhat out of our hands, but we're definitely taking a look at that and making sure everything is compliant. So I would say, you know, we share the concern of making sure that the water is not negatively affected if if possible.
Right. I spoke with Justin Kozak at the Conservation District this morning, and I guess they're aware of it too. And you know, he said that the current situation is in compliance, but the problem is if we put a large pile of dirt there, then it's gonna adversely impact the ability of that area to recharge water, which is in water in the field. So.
I see. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Um, then I, my one comment is so something that I thought perhaps might be of interest to the Borough Water Authority because they own the property adjacent to Whitehall Road Regional Park. And also the proximity of the wellfields to Route 45 for Harder Thomas. There is a fair amount of discussion about, you know, there are legal requirements for buffers, but there's also a fair amount of discussion about voluntarily supporting recharge and pollinator and native planting and that kind of thing. And I've just always been really interested in whether, you know, the Water Authority would be willing to have like a larger conversation about that kind of land management effort and collaboration, you know, here in the region. Like, for example, whether that property adjacent to Whitehall, would we ever be able to reforce that? Those kinds of questions. And I don't really know how to get a conversation started, but you asked about bringing things back to the body. So I wanted to mention it in front of other board members and ask you if you maybe wanted to, you know, mention something like that during the meeting. It's a little bit different topic, but it might garner some interest in especially in the Source Water Protection Committee.
Right. So they they've been monitoring what's going on with the Whitehall development. In fact, one of their the person that chairs the Source Water Protection Committee has been, you know, attending some of those meetings to kind of stay tuned to what's going on. Obviously, lots of financial issues and other other things there related to. Sorry. I guess I should turn my phone off. Anyway, so they're they're aware of that. But you're you're raising a different issue. My guess is they probably be a minimal to the conversation, but I can pass that on to the board.
Thank you so much, Ford. Okay, any others? All right. Thank you very much for the report and your service.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Ford. You too. Okay, let's go on to unfinished business. And first up under that is the review of the draft 2022 Center Region Council of Governments Program Plan and draft 2022 to 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. This will be introduced by Township Manager Dave Provoca.
Thank you. And I just had a few introductory remarks. I wanted to introduce some of the people on the call, I think. So the board at the last meeting had a chance to run through the comment guide that was provided with the draft 2022 Center Region Cog Program Plan and the 2022 2026 Draft Cog CIP Capital Improvement Plan. With that review, there was a number of questions that were forwarded to the Executive Director and Finance Director at Cog, both of whom are here this evening. They have provided responses, working with some of their staff and team over there to the questions that were submitted. The responses are kind of summarized in the same comment guide and they're included as an attachment with the agenda. Also included, just for keep everything kind of clarified, a blank copy of the program plan as well. As the board has their discussion and engage with with cog staff tonight, both sentries and I are going to take some notes. And we will record the comments that are forwarded by the board so that we can get them over to the Executive Director in advance of the August 19 deadline. Here tonight is Joe Vigilone, the Cog Finance Director, Lou Brungard, the Cog Facilities Coordinator, and of course, the man who needs no introduction, Eric Norberg, Cog Executive Director. That's all that I had to introduce. There's links also in the agenda narrative to both the program plan and CIP drafts.
Thank you very much, Dave, and welcome, Eric, Joe, and Lou. Thanks for attending tonight and being here to answer any questions that we might have. So also let me thank you for all your work on the document to respond to some of the questions after our first review of the document at our last meeting. I I found it very helpful. And so I just wanted you all to know that that was much appreciated. So I'm gonna just go ahead and first open it up to the floor if anybody wanted to comment. Last time we kind of went down each item individually. I don't know that we need to do that tonight, but we certainly can if other board members would like to. But first, I wanted to kind of just open it up and see if we can get the conversation going maybe that way. I know I I have a few comments, but prefer just hear if others wanted to start. If you have a preference that I just head down the document again, like we did before, I'm certainly fine with doing that. Would folks prefer that method? Just okay?
I think if we just go down and we could just focus on the ones that we had the the comments and questions on and just formalize our comments based on.
That sounds great.
Feedback maybe.
That sounds great. Last time I think I did it in person. This time I'm doing it virtually. So why not mix it up a little bit here? All right, first page, first item, questions about the COLA. We were just inquiring about, you know, how that happens at Cog versus the municipalities. We had received a link to the policy. And then the last time we talked about this, we did actually, it's probably maybe good to review this with cog staff here and they can stop us if we were incorrect about anything is that 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 has that the COLA has been adjusted by the Finance Committee. So basically, I think our question was, is this in some sort of a personnel policy manual that it's kind of not adjusted or potentially adjusted by elected officials? But the answer is it can be adjusted by elected officials and that's typically done at the Finance Committee meeting. And that's also typically done ahead of the municipalities having discussions about their COLA. And so that's what we, I think that is a synopsis of what we kind of came to there. Did you want to comment?
I'll refer to Joe on that because it's only, I've only been through this one time, but he and probably Steve have the most memory on what's happened in the past with the Finance Committee.
Thanks. That's who we got that tidbit from Steve, actually. So.
Okay, can you already hear me? Okay, first of all? Okay, so I have a little bit of experience in my 11 year tenure here right now. The last time that the COLA was changed off of the formula of what it was was a general forum action, not a Finance Committee action. So if there was a deviation from the policy, the general forum voted to deviate from that policy. In the policy, I believe we had looked back in the 2008, 2009 timeframe. So it even predates me by a year or two. And the HR Committee at that point made a recommendation to finance and up through exec into general form as to how the calculation for the COLA should be done as well as a merit. So that's how the process went when we, when it was created, as best I can tell from the minutes. And then anytime that we have changed it before and migrated away and not use that policy, it was a vote by the general forum, not by the Finance Committee.
Interesting. So just to reflect back, what you're saying is that what your understanding is of how maybe a change might be made in the COLA for that particular year was made through general forum and that would have been made through this very process that we're doing now. Because this would then drive the budget numbers.
That is correct. And I remember clearly on that Don Han had actually made an argument against it, was in the minority. And he said, I would just want the dissent on the record for what he had done. So I remember that very, very clearly from that was probably 2012, 13 timeframe. It was not long after I had started.
Okay. And just just to sum up the nature of our question, it was really just about how, you know, we have to do the cog budget first, you know, it drives the municipal budgets, if you want to use that phraseology. And so we don't really have an opportunity for the municipalities to maybe a well, the municipalities would have to align with cog as opposed to cog aligning with the municipalities, if that makes sense. So do any other board members want to have any other questions, want to talk about that? Do we want to make any kind of comment on that? Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and add one thing in terms of the alignment metaphor that you were making there. As we got towards the end of the cog budget process and we were at the point of municipal budgets being near final approval, there was a table that we provided last year that showed a comparison of all of the municipal COLAs and merit and the cog COLA and merit. And once everything was pre-well settled in by the municipalities as well as cog, the cog was right in the middle between the high and the low of the municipal totals for both merit and COLA, somewhere higher in terms of merit, somewhere lower in terms of COLAs in a varied. But but at the end of the day, we're kind of right there in the middle of of the pack and no, no change was was proposed towards the end. And we'll keep tracking that. We have a lot of good communication with municipal managers and municipal finance directors. So we always start the budget process utilizing the formula that's in the policy. And, you know, if necessary, change could be made late in the process as Joe described, but it gives everybody a chance to look at that, their own municipal budgets beforehand.
Sorry, the last time we talked about this, this actually took us one of the, this was one of the longest discussions in the whole evening. So don't worry if we're stalling here at the first one, I guess, is my what I'm trying to say. So but so what you're saying, Eric, if I understand correctly, is that the municipalities know what their COLA and merit are going to be before we finalize the cog budget? That wasn't my understanding, but I'm not, I don't actually know. So that's more of a question.
I, it was in October, November, about the time we were in the final review stages and municipal budgets were not finalized, but it was in the tentative approval process. So.
Right. Okay, okay, great. So I guess we just sort of have a more of a conscious awareness of that now. Like you said, we're going to track it and to keep an eye on that. Okay, any board members, back to board members, do you have any comments or questions? Lisa?
I was just going to say, that's interesting what Eric said about comparing it to the previous, maybe you said comparing to the previous years, or you said comparing it to the current years COLA of the other municipalities. Either way, I think an annual comparison of what it ended, where the cog COLA ended up falling in comparison to the municipalities is what's going to be helpful and and tracking and making sure that it is a compromise or, you know, it's falling within an average range, maybe since we can't really predict, I guess, at the last minute, we kind of could, is what you're saying, but I think just keeping an eye on where the cog pole is fine in relation to the municipalities is what's going to be helpful.
Thank you, Lisa. And then one other thing that we, I guess, kind of came to understanding was how it's calculated, it's, I believe it's uses the same markers or metrics, but different time periods because of how the budgets, the process that we go through, would that be? Is that, do we think that's correct? Or maybe our comment is that is that question? Our process is this. Are other are other municipalities using the same process? I don't know if we actually want to know that. Or if we want to know if cog is using that same process, or if we just want to confirm that now and don't need a comment. But that was one other thing we talked about. Does anybody want to?
I think joking.
Joe?
Can I ask you a quick question of David Ferguson? I want to try to throw him under the bus real quick. What does Ferguson use for their COLA calculation?
Use the CPI, use the unadjusted consumer consumer price index for all goods and services through September, end of September. So through, I guess.
Okay, so he would use the October through September CPIU just once. So what cog does, since we do everything 12 times as hard, is we will use the first, the August through July, and then September through August, October through September, and so on for, and then average those 12 months.
Okay. That's right. I remember this.
We're going to be likely far below where the municipalities are because we are in a heavily increasing inflationary environment. The CPIU for the first nine months was under two and recently it's been over five. So my guess is is based upon how the municipalities have been calculating it versus how cog has been calculating it, we're going to be a couple to 3% beneath where the municipalities are. And that's what Peter Marshall was mentioning
Right.
at the last general forum meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for that refresher. Okay. I think we're probably ready to move on unless I'm misreading the board. I think we have Steve. Yes.
I had just one additional comment to Joe's comment for for the board members who will be here next year. Next year, you may see COGS being significantly higher than the municipalities if it turns out to be significantly lower this year for the same reason. And I think we need to year ahead say that so that next year it's sort of obvious why. So.
Yeah, yes. And we'll have more likely, you know, the memory of it and don't take as much time asking questions. Yeah. Thank you, Steve. Okay, let's move on. Next comment, should cog hire a human resources administrator and a finance administrator administrator? We asked about, you know, the salaries and did they include benefits and oh, I do have it open here. They are prorated. We were shown the full yield full details are on page 19. Does anybody want to make a comment on this item? And I believe that full details did include, it was including all benefits and whatnot. Yeah. Okay, I am not seeing anybody wanting to make a comment. We have a yes or no answer here. Should we? Yes or no? I guess no comment is saying yes. I don't know if that's actually true, but.
I would go with the HR, I would go with the HR Committee recommendation.
Okay, okay. Okay. Everybody comfortable with that? I guess right now I'll just get in my comment about concern about staffing. So I'm, I guess I'm just, I don't know if I'm limiting to this to cog. I think that this board has talked about this before in a general way. And so I do think it's an appropriate time to talk about it, though I think that we're, we as a board are trying to build more of an awareness about costs of staffing and tie that to, you know, what policies we're trying to implement. I mean, certainly the climate change and adaptation plan is really important. But it also kind of took off and is, you know, involving additional staff and growing the organization. So I I guess I am elected, as an elected official, I'm kind of struggling to get a handle on what kind of growth is appropriate for government in terms of staff. And so I'm just always keeping an eye on that. And this is also tied to that space need, the redistribution of space in the administrative portion of cog. And of course, that makes sense. And if you're going to hire somebody, they have to have a working space. I remember once I got hired at Penn State and they took me into a closet and they said, this is your office. And they weren't joking. So we don't want to do that. So I understand that, but you know, there are there are ramifications of that. And we have this lease other elsewhere in this document, we asked about the lease document, did it, would it have an effect on whether we would make an investment with LED lights? I think that when we conveyed that question, folks thought we meant the lease issue with how it's being claimed in the various municipalities, but we actually meant the timeframe on it as in what's the return on investment? And then that is related back to growing the organization and what rate of growth we should be expecting from a regional organization that that provides these services to the municipalities and how long we plan on being in that building. So I know personally, every time I look at this growth question, I think why aren't we answering the larger question of do we need to look for a different building? Why aren't we putting that first as opposed to all of these, what I consider tangential invest, capital investment projects? And so I'll end my monologue about that there. And I guess see if it inspires any other board comments in particular about staffing or anything. Lisa?
Well, I think, you know, you did raise a concern that I had had, but I guess my question then would be when the Finance Committee and HR Committee looked at this, were they, you know, what what factors did they consider? And was it compared maybe to the amount of staffing at the municipal level? So say, you know, is the staff that a potential HR administrator would need to manage, how does that relate per person to say what we have at Ferguson and how much financial admin work is there relative to what our staff is handling at the municipal levels? So, you know, I'm unable to to gauge, you know, what what they need, I I guess, without knowing what was what was about what the recommendation was evaluated upon.
I can start by answering the first part of that, Lisa, and then Joe, I think, can give some of the comparison that he's looked at. But one of the things that I've seen since joining the cog over a year and a half ago and having worked in municipal government in other cities. and having, having worked in municipal government in other cities, in other states, is that the administration staff and typically lags and is always trying to play catch up to be in support of the growth of other departments or agencies. As, as other areas of a municipality grow, it's, it's usually HR, finance, and the, and the support functions that take time to catch up, especially when the workload increases for, for payroll, for benefits, for those kinds of things. And so the HR committee and finance committee looked at such things and looked at concerns regarding risk management. What are the things we're not getting done in finance and, and in HR? The things that we should be doing, that, that get pushed off to the back burner in order to take care of projects and the more, more urgent matters that need to be taken care of. And so I think there was a sense that, that over time, the, the both of the administrative functions in the COG, HR, and finance areas have not kept up as, as COG grew, as Parks and Rec grew, as, as planning grew, and so on and so forth. And, and so the, the, there was the justification in terms of both current workload and the, the projects and, and needs that aren't being done. But I know Joe's compared and had some conversations with some of the municipal finance officials about kind of benchmarking. So it's a little informal, but Joe, do you want to add to that, please? You still need to.
You to myself. I got myself there. Sorry about that. I guess to start out first on the finance side, back when we started and switched to the finance, it was discussed in the 2013 or 14 area, whether or not we should have two or three staff. And the decision was made, and I argued for it, was let's start out with two, as this is a new, a new program, and let's see if we need to go to three. And when it comes to three, i- if we do need to go there, I will tell you when that time comes. And I believe we hit, we've hit that. So looking at our staffing right now, we have one executive director, an office manager, an HR person, and two finance people in administration, plus the facilities coordinator Lou, who came in this year. So looking at it in comparables with Ferguson Township, Tom, a lot of great information within you guys' budget document. COG's expenditures on an annual basis are roughly, in the 2021 budget, $21.1 million. And Ferguson Township's were about $23 million. In terms of year-round employees, COG has 124, and Ferguson has 66 and a quarter, according to their budget. And then if we look at payroll entities, COG has three. We actually have four audible entities, but three that have payroll every two weeks. And I believe Ferguson pays everybody on there through one payroll every two weeks. So there is a good bit of work area. And like I said, at least in the finance perspective, we have two employees, and from the HR's perspective, we have one. And I believe within the budget, there are three finance people right now, excluding the tax person at Ferguson Township. And I'm not sure, I know at least one of HR, but I don't know who else might have duties related or unrelated to that.
Thank you, Joe. Also, I, I had sent an email to Joe, it's on the related topic, asking if he could direct me to the page to, to look at percentage of budget that is staffing. And so that's on, that's on page 12 of the COG detailed budget. And that's, that's another helpful way to kind of take a look within COG at the staffing as a percent of total budget between different departments. I don't know if that's helpful to any other supervisors, but I guess one, one thought I had about, so, so I think that, Joe, what you're saying is, you know, a long time ago, before any of us ever had a discussion like this at all whatsoever in our lives ever before, there was this idea that we would need this thing in finance. And I guess it's my constant task to try to make sure that next year's elected officials and the ones after, and the ones after, get this valid information so that they can make good decisions, you know, with as much information as they can have. So I know you guys are on board for that, too. But I guess the outcome of this, this discussion is, even though we're all rowing in that same direction, there's still ground to cover, I guess, in terms of that. So let's keep working in that, that direction. In that vein, another item that comes up in this comment guide is the communications, I'm not, I'm not going to get the name right, communications person for the climate action effort. And I think there's already a communications person in Parks, does all their communication. There might be one at SCLO, I'm not sure. But when I'm looking at this structure, what I see us building out is, basically, so at Ferguson, we have one communications person, really, that, I mean, there's other staff that help that person, of course, but there isn't one main one. But it seems like at COG, we're going to have one in each department. I don't know that that's a good thing or a bad thing. I mostly sort of am wondering, is that a thing? Is that a truth? Am I seeing a pattern here that we should then plan for? I know in emergency management, we relied on State College Borough to do those communications. Should we be planning for that in emergency management, or did that, you know, work? So I guess that's something I'd be, you know, interested in knowing if this COG-wide staffing study is going to identify, yes or no, we need a communication person in each department. That be, I know I'm skipping down a couple, but that's another question that's really related to, to this.
So I think I can add a little, shine a little bit of light onto this. SCLO Library has a halftime communications manager as well. The communications function in Center Region Parks and Recreation is part of the Recreation Services Manager's responsibility. So Christie has a whole range of responsibilities, including some of the marketing and communications. And the, elsewhere in COG, including Administration, where Scott Finkley handles our website, there are people that are doing a little bit of marketing, whether it's social media or, or press releases or those sorts of things in different areas. And I think that, again, based on my experience elsewhere, I've seen this sort of thing grow as a part of this person's job, as a part of that person's job, somebody that has a good skill set and ability, and it grows a little. So one thing that kind of tipped the, the scale for the request from Center Region Planning was to, because of the, the need to engage the community and get communication out on such projects is solar and, and some of the things you've asked about, Joe, about how to get the word out into the community about the different sustainability initiatives. And they, they really felt that, you know, there's the need, but let's ask for a half, half position first. When I talked about the half position in the library, the library director recently, she said, you know, she would love to have more time. There's more than enough for that half position to, to do. And so one of the things we do need to look at in the, in the, kind of the bigger picture, is how, how best to coordinate. And, and my, my initial thought is, let's have a communication team that meets monthly or quarterly to coordinate, maybe help out when there's going to be a big issue or a big project coming in one area so that some of the, the creativity and, and resources from other agencies can be coordinated, but not necessarily centralized yet. I, I don't know that that's the right answer, though that's been suggested in some of the other conversations. And again, one of the benefits of this discussion tonight is for Ferguson Board to give feedback, that then will be compiled with the feedback from the other boards and councils in the next few weeks. So, so we'll, we'll really look forward to getting that feedback. But, but we really are trying to, to assess the need and, and identify where the, the particular need exists. And in this case, the communications manager for planning is in, in the planning agency. The study that's proposed in the administration budget is a classification and compensation study, not a staffing study. So we would not look at what the staffing needs are for particular functions, but it would look at the classifications, the job descriptions, if you will, and identify whether they, they need to be updated, whether they're current and relevant to the, the functions that staff are performing in that position, and then benchmark in the community and, and the appropriate marketplaces to make sure that the staff are appropriately compensated.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for reminding us that that is a compensation study and not a staffing study. And I recollect that in the case of the sub-study that's being done by the Parks, that is a staffing study. I guess, okay, so, all right, here's then, I finally, I think I've reached my comment that I would like the board to consider. I, I'm going to put it in the form of a question, but I, I think maybe I'd like, I'd like COG to consider this. Is COG going to consider a COG-wide staffing study? I think that's what I'm trying to get to. Can we get to a place where we understand, along with our strategic plan, what the expectation is, just like they're doing in Parks across COG? Do we, does, does the rest of COG think maybe there is a need for that kind of study? That's my question. So I guess I'd ask the board what they think about that. And then we should probably maybe move on if no one else has any thoughts on a different comment. So my question is, okay, Patty, yeah?
Well, I'm actually sort of afraid to hear, hear the answer to that question, because my feeling is that it would be yes and that we would have to pay money for another study.
I understand the, that fear. But maybe it would be good, because it's then, we don't have to have little triggers in the future, because we know what to expect and we can plan for it, plan for that growth. So if we're worried the answer might be yes, then maybe we should definitely make that comment, is my question, or my thought on that. Others? Lisa?
One thing that I try to do in our capital improvement plan is to look at the previous year's capital improvement plan and just compare and contrast how we are following through with those plans. And so I was trying to do that with this, but it's a little bit trickier with the COG program plan, just because of the layout, I think. So I'm not sure if it would be more helpful to others to have maybe a, a different layout or if you indicate in, in the, in the request column, that this was in the prior year's CIP, so that it's acknowledged that this was planned for. Because that would help, too, if I'm a newly elected official coming in and saying, oh, this was previously approved in the, in last year's CIP. I know that the rest of the municipality's been planning for this, this is expected. Versus, oh, we've just decided this year that this is the year we need to, to add this position. So that was another way I was trying to gauge this. I'm assuming, based on Joe's comments, that this was in the previous program plan. But I, I could be incorrect about that. So I guess I'd appreciate any feedback on that. But I, I think that's a, I think that's a fair question, although I agree with Patty. I, I think that a study likely would show that, you know, whatever, that additional staff would be needed. So I'm not sure how needed that is beyond what the HR committee provides.
I think that it would be just somebody that could give more direction on, you know, the plan for growth and how, how to manage that, as opposed to, I, I, I'm not sure. It would give maybe some attention to the matter that is now being done in, in somewhat more of a, you know, we need this now, kind of immediate need, sort of a thing. I would be on board with that comment, Lisa, of could we somehow note if a staff position is in a previous SIP? Joe, you already do? Sorry?
That, that's exactly, we do not include staff positions in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. That is just capital-related. So anything with staffing has been coming up through either a study, such as the FIRE study, or the or something coming through there, and then goes up to the program plan, which is a one-year look forward, not a multi-year look forward. But the Capital Improvement Program, the CIP, is only on the capital side. We have not ever put any staffing positions within that plan.
Okay, and Ferguson Township had decided years ago, I believe it was now, to do that, to put, to put staffing in the CIP because of the costs and to really alert the board members, like each other through the years, to see it. So can, maybe our comment is, can we, could we consider doing that at the COG? Like Ferguson does, because that's, that's then the vehicle to, to educate us, and that's the vehicle, the plan right there it is. Could we, but what do we think about making that comment? Could we do it? Steve, we got a thumbs up from Steve. Lisa? All right, Prasangit? All right, Patty? Okay, we've got our comment. Our comment is, in any staffing thing, could we basically integrate this into the SIP? The CIP, the Capital Improvement Program of COG, that would be very helpful. Ferguson's done it, it's very helpful. That's it. Great.
Also, I have for the should question, if I may, that the board is supportive of the HR committee's recommendation for these specific positions?
Oh, Dave, you're bringing me back on course. I was almost about to get there. So I was going to say, with that said, given all the knowledge we have about the need of this, I think we're going for a yes on the should. With a strong recommendation, it'd be followed up by integrating staffing into the SIP. How do folks, all right, great, fantastic. All right, should $45,000 be budgeted for the first COG-wide classification and compensation study in 15 years? I believe we have a, a yes on this. All right, we had some questions answered. Okay. Moving down, should 10,000 be budgeted to implement initial recommendations? I'm working my way back here to our answers. We, we had said we didn't know if that would be enough, maybe don't budget it at all, or budget what we think would be appropriate. I don't know that that's a comment officially yet. Does COG want to say anything? Staff want to say anything about that before we?
The, the only thing I would note is that it was kind of a contingency item. We weren't sure what would be recommended from the study, but in the worst-case scenario, there's a, a security issue or, or something urgent that shouldn't be put off and waited, something that shouldn't wait until 2023, that, that there may be some money that we should have available for that. Otherwise, we can go to the COG contingency, if that's, you know, what's needed, and just come to the finance committee at, at the time that that happens. So it was a placeholder in, in the event of something that needed to be funded, that came out of the study urgently.
So instead of it saying to implement the initial recommendations, it's really more about if there's a, like a critical thing?
That was my thought, yes.
Okay, okay. What do we think? Are we saying yes? Should it? Yes or no? Yes? Okay, Patty? Okay, or, or not? Do you want to speak to not? No, okay. So we've got a yes, I believe, on that. Should 15,000 be budgeted to complete the final recommended phase of general forum improvements AV? We had some questions answered about that. Are we all thinking yes at this point? Okay, yes. Should 40,000 be budgeted to improve the administration offices to provide workspaces? Well, aforementioned not wanting them to work in closets, so yes. Absolutely. Should 17.5 be budgeted to relamp the COG building and parking lot? We asked a question about payback and the lease. It may have a, the answer was, the may, it may have a payback in less than, than, in less than the number of years remaining on the lease, but it may not, I guess.
We're, we're also hoping to, to leverage FirstEnergy West Penn Power Grant that could significantly reduce the, the cost of the lamping and, and really reduce the amount of years for that payback.
Okay, so I have a comment about this, that I don't know if I want to put forward to the board to, for us all to adopt, but maybe, maybe I could get some feedback on it. I don't know. So we've talked a fair amount about LEDs and the So we've talked a fair amount about LEDs and the kind of light that they cast here in Ferguson Township. The small area plan for Pine Grove Mills specifically called out the need to do like non-circadian rhythm or non-disturbing or circadian rhythm type LED. Not just with placement, but also the number, the amount of lumens. So what we're really trying to do in Pine Grove Mills is to install streetlights that are under 4,000 lumens, I believe. Maybe it's 2,700, actually, is 2,700 lumens, because that's what's recommended for that kind of a a light. So when a lot of times when municipalities do a relamping in LED from something else, they have a lot of complaints. Because it's so much brighter, right? So we're just doing a changing of the bulb and not a changing of the whole fixture, which is great because it's cheaper. But that's like maybe not going to take into account this new bright light in there. So my question slash comment would be. How are we approaching that? I know that we're going to meet the meet the 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 light ordinance of Ferguson Township. I'm sure it's going to be compliant with the ordinance, definitely not my question. Because our light ordinance is kind of old and doesn't include these kinds of considerations. It was pre-LED adoption or yeah, to some extent. So how would that be handled in this particular application? Thank you. Lou, I believe that might be for you.
Sure, I can answer that. So I think back to your ordinance, you're required to have a tenth of a foot candle. For the measurable walking space, is that correct, David?
Oh, boy.
Again, coming back to the ordinances, but also the other industry standards for safe lighting. So Laura, you're absolutely right, the the color, the intensity is one thing, but we also have to have measurable light. And that's one thing that LEDs can challenge. Their bright spot, they may not forecast to the walking space. You really have to look at the fixtures as well. But yes, we want to make sure that we have no light migration off the property. And fall within the. In the ordinances, so we would end up doing a lighting study. That would demonstrate just like you would expect for a land development plan with that lighting plan. To ensure that there's no excursion, but you do have the intensity at the walking space you need.
And with that, the placement of the lights aren't going to change, it'll be the new LED bulbs only.
Correct, the fixture heads, and we've been replacing with LEDs as the the halogen and the metal headlights expire. So we've already demonstrated that that fixture itself, the head stays and we're just replacing the light.
Thanks, Lou. I think this my comment is probably more reserved for the Climate Action Committee than than this particular document. Because we sometimes tend to sacrifice one thing for another, like it's really efficient at 8,000 lumens. Like we're also blinded, you know, so I think my comment is probably reserved for that committee. Thank you very much for that answer. So are we saying yes on the LED 17.5? And that would be including the study that you're talking about? The study and the lamping?
And we can randomly measure, that's not something that we would have to do necessarily with an engineer. We have light metering equipment that we can demonstrate too.
Thanks, Lou. All right, next, I think I've got, should the higher than anticipated reimbursement from PHMIC be utilized to fund? And then there's three choices. I'm not sure from COG staff, are we supposed to pick one or are we just supposed to say yes or no on that? A preference or something?
I'll turn it over to Lou, but we have identified a few choices, but there's actually. They're not trade offs necessarily, there, there's some options that the HR committee has begun discussing. In particular, the the wellness enhancements and things like that. We we haven't looked at the dental vision program in many years, and and that is something that the staff have asked us to take a look at. That would not impact the 2022 budget, but potentially could impact the following year. But the the most expensive item on the list is the air quality topic, indoor air quality that was noted. And and Lou's been doing a lot of work on that for both the library and COG building, so I'll let him address that.
Sure, so the the two previously budgeted projects were overall to improve indoor air quality by replacing components. Of the HVAC systems and expanding the life. One of the considerations that we did, Laura, back to your question earlier. How much reinvestment do we want to do in the COG building from a? A systems perspective until we have a a better idea of ownership, the future planning and and everything else? These improvements, we've narrowed down to just exactly that, to improve the indoor air quality. So allowing additional fresh air, outside air to come into the buildings, appropriately treat that and distribute that. So that's where the scope of both the COG building HVAC and the slow center region library.
Back to my meeting.
Hi, Dave, Madrick, sorry. Go ahead, Lou, thanks.
So and that's the overall intent, that's why we had grouped it into this concept. It absolutely is a health and safety initiative. And not just for staff, but also all of our patrons that visit both those locations.
So you guys are just looking for like, we like all of those options or? I'm sorry, Eric, are you?
I would just say that we're like the other topics, we're looking for feedback and any concerns. We'll we'll kind of filter that in together with the other municipalities, if you have any thoughts and recommendations.
Well, I I I personally, I I I appreciate Lou addressing my concerns about the longevity of us occupying the COG building. I I do appreciate the idea of the changes in the HVAC system. Because there's a cascade effect to health and wellness of employees and people in that building. So I would definitely strongly support that. H, like somebody else said, HVAC discussions always make me nervous because I think a lot of money. But it's, I think it's a really important thing and I'm. I would be supportive of that, you know, if other board members have any thoughts on this item? Nope, we all like it. Okay, uh, next up, emergency management operating, oh. I'm sorry, I'm. I was actually, I've gotten too many documents going here. Apparently, I was just on our comment, our comment document. Let me see if I can find my place back on this document. Okay, we've got some notes, emergency management, oh, I see, I gotcha, okay. Should center region code administration proceed with plans to move to electronic equipment in the field? First year cost of implementation, 25,000, annual service costs 6,000 plus. We have, yes, I think we. Yes? Anybody have any no on that? Come on, everybody, give me a head nod, yes, okay. Did I miss one here? No, tracer note. Okay, I am on page. Four, should CRCA proceed with plans to move to an electric vehicle fleet pilot phase in 2022? Cost for the pilot is 35,000. I think we're, I think we're thumbs up on this, this was that project that was downgraded from the 100,000 plus, right? And now it's, yeah, and I think this has been through all the committees. I think we all support this lower level of project that still starts to make that transition. Okay.
And Laura, this falls into that crawl, walk, run concept. Right, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves. And whether it's the vehicle type, the the performance characteristics or the charging station. So this will be that intermediate phase between crawl and walk.
Nice, I like it, it's a great analogy. Okay, we're on page six. Should the library material budget be increased to meet patron demand for bestsellers in eBooks and e-audiobooks? While aiming to meet the state standards to devote 12% of expenditures to collections? Yes? Yeah, okay. Should the library invest in remote library material pickup lockers and associated increase in fees for remote locations? Yes? Okay. I'm on page seven, should a halftime communications manager be hired in 2022 to assist with developing communication strategy? This for the Climate Action Sustainability Committee, oh, plan, I mean. Wait, as recommended by the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee. But I remember reading it's more than just for the Climate Action Plan, it's some other planning agenda. Like transportation projects, bike pass, that kind of stuff, I'm imagining.
Part of that would be funded by the MPO budget.
Right, right, I recall that, oh, that was in your answer, I recall, thank you. So. I think. Was this in the, was, would? I was going to ask this, was this in the CIP? And then I just remembered our last comment, so. This wouldn't have been in the CIP. This came out of just out of committee this year, is that how this evolved then? The staff position?
Yes, though I think it was talked about before last year's program plan. But I I think because of the the COVID year that we were in in late 2020, early 2021, there was. Yeah, no, really no priority given to adding staff because we weren't sure how things would play out. We weren't aware of what assistance there would be through anything like ARPA or anything like that. So though there there was an acknowledgement in the discussion last year that. That the Climate Action Plan and everything related to that would would have an increased workload on staff. And would require more staff resources, there there hadn't been a a specific request created. And I think the idea of having some sort of a way of forecasting that, as you suggested earlier. May be helpful to identify those for future years.
So Eric, my memory of the that is a little bit different, I'm not saying that it's right at all. But my memory was that the staff that was moved in the sustainability planner position was in charge of this and was going to manage this. Like this was a main part of that particular position. But now what, so basically it was, but now it got too big, so now we're adding a position. Is that kind of like the same as what you're saying, but?
Well, the the position that Pam's in was that was before my time, so I don't recall exactly what was identified at that point. What I can tell you is that in some of the discussions that I was having with with Jim and Pam last summer, based on the the scope. And and the priorities that were being identified through the sustainability program and the Climate Action Plan and so on. That this was going to be more than Pam could do on her own, which is why you have these two items. The one piece that's communication related, the halftime or less than halftime because some would be shared with MPO. And then the consultant to to help with the technical things that are really beyond the the staff capabilities right now. And so those those two were identified conceptually, at least in internal discussions last year. But we felt it was not, it was too early due to COVID to be proposing additional staff and those kind of expenses last year. Plus, we had to get further along in the approval of the climate, climate action and the adaptation plan, which will be coming this year. And so now that we know more about the plan and we know more about the priorities that were identified through the community forums in the spring. We have more of a picture of what the needs are for the community.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I'm 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 not particularly supportive of this particular position, and I don't know if other board members feel the same way or not. Not because I don't support the work that's being done, but because, well, I guess actually, maybe that is why. I support generally that work to be done, but I've been concerned and constantly voicing my concern about the excessive. What I call excessive emphasis on convincing other people to do things like in commercial buildings and in residential buildings. Like us convincing people to put solar on their roof, that kind of thing. And I think a large amount of this position is devoted to that particular thing. And I just see it's an endless, it's an endless effort. And it's also, as Cooperative Extension will tell you, it's a really almost a futile effort to. To convince somebody else to do something just because it's a good thing, I think. And I don't know if it's really governments. I don't know, I think Cooperative Extension would be like a much, much better vehicle to get adoption of these kinds of things. But the PUC is really not supportive of alternative energies in PA and also the legislature. So we don't see the PUC kind of. Being helpful in that respect, and until that changes, I I don't know, I just. I personally do not support us creating in COG this position. And so I'll just put that out there to the board. I see that this is growing that particular area of COG. When just like two years ago, it wasn't even a thing that we did. And until we get like a larger understanding of how much. That's anticipated to grow, I just I just don't support it. So others? Do you have support for this, this position? The funding of this position, Patty?
Um, I I sort of agree with everything that you have just said, and I also would maybe encourage. As it starts to work out, much like you had said with the other positions of finance and HR. Cross-training perhaps until it gets teased out a little better. So maybe cross, being a little creative and cross-training somebody else. So I would agree with what you said, basically, Laura.
Okay, thanks, Patty. Others? So Patty, you're just bringing into the discussion the idea that in administration with those additional positions. There's already pieces and parts of communication being done, since we're just starting out, maybe that could be.
No, I I guess what I was saying is that in the administration, when they were talking about the HR and the finance person. One of the things they had discussed about was cross-training so they could back each other up. And so that concept of using somebody else in another piece, cross-training on the communications piece. As this sort of develops, that maybe the idea of cross-training somebody in this.
Gotcha. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Other board members on this item, creating this position that is the communications person for the Climate Action Plan? Got Steve?
Well, I guess I'm. I'm not completely sure that our Climate Action Plan is. Really a plan. And not. An attempt to. Make it look like we have a plan. I just sort of hate to say, but. Yeah, and so I I think I would have to say I'm not, right now, I'm not in favor. Because I I agree that the the education component of it is, I'm not sure it's a COG function. And I not, I don't see anything significantly. Likely to create a difference in this. I guess I've been a little, little concerned about the whole involvement of COG in climate action. All along, I think we should at least raise that discussion among COG before this position is approved. Say, is is this really a function that we should be pursuing? With additional staff, or is it really a function that COG can even accomplish? And I I know there are people who disagree with me on it, but I don't think it is something we can, or we can accomplish much, so.
Thanks, Steve. And Lisa and present it, Lisa.
So one of my concerns that I stated at the last meeting, we discussed this, is that it's really difficult to find a part-time. A person to fill a professional position like this part-time. So I was concerned about that and this probably expanding to a full-time. So I was concerned about that and this probably expanding to a full-time role rather quickly. But then beyond that, I think I'm just more concerned at this point about the job description and the duties that have been described, they're so broad. And so I think the, the scope really needs to be refined. You know, for example, with the CCMPO, was that discussed in, probably, I'm guessing it was discussed in their budget discussions that they need a communications person, but I'm not familiar with that at all. So, you know, I don't know that CCMPO has had much discussion on that. So, you know, I, I understand what I guess COG or, you know, the climate staffing is saying that they heard through the public forum that more communication was needed. But in particular, what I heard at the forum was that just as really communication was needed from the authorities and from the municipalities about their activities. So the one large topic I heard at that forum was that they wanted more communication about the then potential UAJA solar project. And so, and then, you know, what does the borough do with organics recycling or that kind of thing? You know, they wanted more communication from those entities. So could we not maybe focus on that in this next year? Having those entities redirect their communications, maybe from print materials to the online avenues that we're hearing people want much more and then reassessing later? So. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of looking at this again, but not for this next year.
Thanks, Lisa, a lot of good thoughts there. Presented, did you wanna?
I, I pretty much, at least I had a few of the points that I had, which is, you know, it can be hard to find part-time people who are good. And I also think essentially, I'm trying to look at, you know, what gives us the best value for money, given that we have limited resources? And whether, you know, this type of, so that, those are, you know, my concerns. And I'm not sure as to where the value is, what is a critical need, what is not, and so on. So I mean, I pretty much agree with what Lisa said.
Okay, thank you all. So I'm, basically, the answer, I think, to this question is no. But there were a lot of other details in there that I actually am not maybe gonna try to capture right now unless COG staff wants me to, because there was a lot in there. But I think in a nutshell, our board does not support a halftime communications manager for CRPA in particular. Really focusing on the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So, okay. Next is the similar question, at least similar topic. Should the agency hire a consultant to assist in the development of the following work to support implementing the goals of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan? And that is a one-time cost not to exceed $75,000. Thoughts on this? So I'm gonna hearken, go ahead, Steve, did you want to make a comment? Because I was gonna.
I was gonna say, this is pretty much the same thing as I said on the previous one. I don't really, I don't see enough of a plan to implement that. That I'm sure, I'm not sure that it's worth hiring a consultant to do that, but I, I also know that there are plenty of people and throughout that disagree with me on that, so.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I was gonna, well, the, the, the plan, I don't know if you're speaking somewhat metaphorically, but the plan is making its rounds right now. I think it's moving into like, into the final draft phase, like it's going through committees and getting comments. So like technically, there is going to be a plan. But what I think you're saying is more than that, it's like, what does this plan actually mean to COG? Okay. So I guess I would offer a small amount of support for that in that I will again repeat like that you can see in that first bullet, the capacity assessment for greenhouse gas reductions in residential and commercial properties. You know, it actually doesn't matter at all what the capacity is if people aren't willing to do something about it. So I kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse in that respect. On the other hand, if this plan were much more focused at naval gazing, like looking at our fleets, making the plan to convert those fleets, making the, you know, pathway to integrate with the, the facilities of, you know, the parks and our mowing and all of that stuff. It really was looking at us and how we can change. Then my narrative is completely different because I see us as having unlimited will in implementing those changes. So I would support it if, if it had more of a focus on that and less of a focus on this other, these, what these other people can be doing. What do other board members think about this as it's presented and then our comments? Again, I think those comments might be better for the Climate Action and Adaptation Committee or Sustainability Committee, sorry. Do others have, Lisa?
Um, I guess I'm, I'm torn on this because I'm not on the climate committee. And so I'm just, I feel, I guess, at a little bit of a disadvantage because my question last time had been, what does the technical advisory group have to do with formulating a plan like this and as well as the Climate Action Committee and staff? So I guess my confusion is related to those responsibilities. There was some explanation given here. I'm not opposed to the consultant if that's what was planned as the next step. But again, I'm just, I'm not clear on, is this what was planned at the next step? After the plan was done, that COG would engage a consultant to create an action plan? So, you know, when I look at these solution capacity analysis, evaluate funding models, you know, those are things that I would think that staff and the committees would be working on. So if this was something that was planned, that no, we will need an outside consultant to, to address these things, then I'm supportive of that. But my, my understanding had been that these were what the staff and committee was working on. So I'm, that may be my misunderstanding, but I guess I need a little bit more context around the responsibilities of those other, other groups that I can justify this a little bit more.
Any other board members before we ask COG staff to, to respond to that if possible? Patty or presented about the consultant? Okay, presented?
Yeah, I would like to hear the staff's response and then I might have comments.
Great, so just like to recap that, I think it was, can we distinguish the duties of this consultant, this one-time fee for this consultant in this plan from staff and committee responsibilities right now? I think I captured that.
And I, I think that feedback is helpful. One of the things I would say is, is that this is designed to bolster what staff has capabilities to do and provide the technical capabilities beyond what Pam's capable of. Pam's a sustainability planner. She's not necessarily able to do some of the technical analysis. And one of the points that you made a moment or two ago, Chair, the a lot of what's being shaped in, into the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan now is, is addressing how the COG and municipalities can set the example to be on the leading edge of implementation of measures like the lighting improvements that we mentioned and other things. And by setting that example, then, then we can hopefully encourage folks to follow along. And one of the things that I've always found is a good way of convincing people is not, not because it's a good thing to do, but because this will save you money. It'll make your home more comfortable if you insulate, for example, and you do some efficiency measures. You'll, you'll be more comfortable in the winter and the summer, you'll save money. There are those kind of things, which I think is part of the modeling and developing strategies for helping people through this. The other difficulty that I'm sure you're probably aware of here is that municipalities and the COG don't control any of the utilities that have an influence on our, our billing. We don't control the water, we don't control the, the natural gas or electricity. And so when it comes to incentives and programs for efficiency, those will come and go depending on what the Commonwealth wants to encourage as well as what the utilities want to encourage. And so helping low to moderate income homeowners and, you know, other property owners find ways to leverage efficiencies and implement measures is one of the things that I think we can help them do, rather than just say, go figure it out for yourself. If you save money, that's great, and you'll be more comfortable and your bills will be lower. And I think that, that makes our, the job of staff, regardless of whether it's COG or the municipalities, a little bit more complicated in helping people reach the sustainability goals for the region.
Thanks, Eric. I mean, that was a great answer. Okay, so I feel like we're a little bit split on this. So I'm gonna have to maybe do a straw poll just to keep us moving here. So it, are you, as it is, in support of the consultant to take this plan one step further? So, at this point in time, at this point in time? Okay, I've got three downs and one and two ups. Does that, did every, anybody else see what, anything other than that? Okay, so we have a split board on whether to move forward with this and we've got a slight majority to not, to not. Okay, next up, we're on page nine. Should a part-time administrative assistant be hired as recommended by the ESCI study? Estimated first year cost of $34,600. And that is for, for public safety. For fire, for fire protection. I know this has been through my committee, I got on this. Does anybody have any, no thank you to this?
So I have a brief question.
Yes.
Just, so, so what is the need here is what I'm trying to figure out?
Well, as it came through committee, it's similar to basically what Eric was saying about other administrative support, just the need for additional administrative support. There's one person handling basically all three, emergency management, fire, public code. So this is additional administrative staffing in that area.
Yeah, if the work is more than that can be handled, then yeah, we have to.
Yeah, and then this was also identified in the, the fire protection study that was recently completed. So I think it's both of those. Okay.
That fire protection study was very thorough and it's really targeted toward keeping our long-term costs as low as possible for as long as possible, so.
Right, that's true. It's really targeted at supporting the volunteer, the volunteer philosophy that we've got and really supporting that. And that's why I'm now starting to talk about the pool, the pool for our volunteers to help retain, recruit and retain. So, okay, so we've got support of that. Next, should $880,000 be expended to replace engine five-three in accordance with the Capital Improvement Plan for the Regional Fire Protection Program? Yes, this was in the capital. Okay. Should 29 and change be expended to purchase UTV five dash two in 2022 in accordance with the capital program plan? Yes, sorry, flipping between screens, yep, okay. Should funds be budgeted for re-striking the block and brick at the Borough Fire Station over the next two years as recommended by facility coordinator? Yes. Okay. Moving down through some notes. Sorry, moving more through some notes. I'm on page 12. Should the water slide and pool feature refurbishment and power washing gel coating projects slated for Park Forest Pool in 2021 be continued at Welsh in 2022? Okay, we've got facility coordinator opinion there. I have a question about this. So this is, okay, so my understanding of this is there's two really different things contained in this. Oh, maybe not. I thought there was a new pool that was planned, or not new pool, new slide planned for a pool. This is just a refurbishment?
So there were two methodologies. One was the power wash and chemical wash and not necessarily recoat. And then as we looked into the aesthetics and the impressions and everything else, it was the washing and recoding. It's not a new slide. This comes back to the facility condition assessments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so do we have? Give me some feedback.
With the strength of Lou's nod, yes, and say yes.
All right, great, moving on. Should concrete slab repairs that were started in 21 for both pool sites be completed? Estimated cost of $15,000? Yes, yes. Should Park Forest Pool parking lot repairs and resurfacing be completed at approximate cost of $15,000? Yes. Through some notes. Should the interior finish upgrades within the restroom facilities at both pools be completed? Including floor tile, door handle, sink and shower fixtures, et cetera? This is $25,000. So restroom facilities at both pool interiors. Yes, okay. Should $30,000 be budgeted to purchase and retrofit a concession truck to serve the pools, other agency facilities and special events? So I just want to clarify then, so I'm reading this, this time, that it's really not intended for use in municipal parks. I'm reading this as agency facilities, pools and special events. So is that, can, can staff give me a head nod on that or we don't know? Okay, okay. So that's not really intended for municipal park use unless maybe there's a big event, two-deck or something like that? Okay, we had some conversation on this last time. Do, do, do any board members want to continue that conversation today? I have a question about that. So I, so I'm, I was under the impression that there is literally a concession stand at really every single one of these facilities except for what will be White Hill Road Regional Park. So, so there's, isn't there a concession at the pools? And there's concession at Hess? And there's concession at Oak Hall? And there's concession at, not at Millbrook?
I'll let Lou talk about what he's seen at the pools, because he's been doing the facility condition assessments.
Thanks.
So there's, I would call it food staging areas at best, Laura. There's tables, a lot of this is warming plates and crock pots, quite honestly. So a formal concession stand, Oak Hall probably has the most defined area from a concession perspective. The pools are mostly just space to where appliances can be brought in, plugged in and food kept warm. But there's not formal food prep and storage outside of a refrigerator for that event that weekend.
Okay, so there's some method, but not really what would be a full food truck kind of method of service. But in that case, though, those facilities are fixed, they're there. In this case, it would be a truck that could only be in one place at one time. So have we at all discussed then the idea of investing? I mean, the pools aren't going anywhere, they're very popular. Have we talked about, so we, this is a case where we're not, I think, the Have we talked about? So we, this is a case where we're not, I think, the general feeling of the board before was like, oh, gosh, not another box truck. They're terrible for the environment, right? It's driving all, this is the opposite direction of the way that we want to be going. Maybe we want to think about investing in those facilities that already exist if the space is there as opposed to this kind of what seems to be a little bit of a from left field, no pun intended, kind of a ball. So can you speak to that at all, Lou? The idea of maybe investing in those actual facilities? I know it's in the budget for Whitehall. I mean, it's planned for there. We have one at Oak Hall. Maybe investing in the pools and not investing in this truck.
I think a lot of that comes back to programming needs and I would just reserve that to the agency staff and not make a determination. But I want to just come back to your Whitehall comment too. That's a future development of that whole pavilion. So that's not part of this original scope right now.
Right, oh, no, I know. I do know. Oh, I know. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I guess my comment on this would be my main reservation was we should look into having someone who already owns a concession business and see if we can contract it. But the staff response seems to be that that's not something that will be feasible. Because no one would be really interested in doing it. If that's the case, then I think I would support this. If not, yeah, if we can't. Because my basic thought was to try to find an external service to do it.
Right, that's right. So Steve, I'll just I'll add my two cents to that. So I hear what the staff response was. However, I've been in those park authority meetings where they're talking about their contracts with these providers. And I've said to them, you know, through my work with the farmer's market, I work with food trucks and these deals that you're offering them, they're not seeing them as deals. So they're not committing to what you want them to commit to because they don't want to share that percentage of their profits with you. So I I think that under the conditions that are laid out before them, they're maybe not willing. But I've also heard that, you know, food trucks have been prohibited by Center Region Park and Racket, some of our municipal parks from operating there. So there's some sort of disconnect. A food truck is like, I want to go there and they're saying, no, you can't. And then they're also saying they can't get them to come. So there's some sort of mismatch with that. So I'm I I'm not I'm not supportive of this and I guess that's where I am still at. I'm not supportive of this particular item for multiple reasons I've already stated. So if there's no other questions, we should probably just make our decision and move on. Lisa?
I'll just say I'm so leery of this. I'm really concerned about anything that has the potential to in effect, get the cause the prices to be raised for entrance at the pool. I just I don't see the need for this. This community has such a robust fleet of food trucks. And I'm actually surprised that the pools are even getting 10% of what the vendors sell. That was kind of a surprise to me. I'm not sure why there's even a need to be making money off of the concessions. So I am really not in favor of this at this time.
Thanks, Lisa. I'll add, I did take a peek. Thanks, Joe, for the information, I think it was you. Where the reports are found from finance committee and then the income from the parks. And if you look at the income from concessions, like what's there? It just doesn't, it seems like we're investing a lot for not that much of a return, kind of building on what Lisa, what Lisa said, other board members. So Lisa is not supportive. Patty?
I am not supportive of this either. I have heard repeatedly about staffing issues related to seasonal work. And I'm assuming it would sort of be considered seasonal work. So I, yeah, and for the reasons that everybody else has previously mentioned, I'm not supportive of this at this time either.
Thanks, Patty. Present it.
Yeah, I'm not supportive either. I don't see a big need there. And it has been expressed better by people before me.
Sorry, thank you. So the board's not supportive of that. That would be our comment. And I guess my follow-up question to the rest of the region, if they are supportive, where is the plan for storage? I know there were break-ins at the old equipment storage place. I don't know if that's been resolved. But this kind of equipment stored at that kind of a facility would be a question. So if we are outvoted as a municipality, like we frequently are in these kinds of situations, since it's only a majority vote, as we've been reminded. Just like putting that question out there, if it does move forward, let's make sure to have a plan for what we'll do then with that expensive equipment in terms of storage. Moving on, I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that if we do say no to this, we should also include a recommendation that we continue looking at working with existing vendors.
Great.
I mean, so that that recommendation goes to other municipalities along with the questions of how how we're going to do this. So I think I think that should be explored.
You're right, Steve. And I'll add State College Borough said the same thing when they talked about this. They they agreed with that kind of approach. Eric, your yellow hand is up.
Right, and I was basically going to make the suggestion that Steve did. If that's a priority for the board, I think it would be good to make sure it's reflected in the notes, especially given the question or concern that you'd raised earlier about the percentage to be returned to the the program. Because I, you know, I give staff credit for trying to bring in more money to offset costs. But if if that revenue issue is seen as a barrier and not a priority and the priority would be more and more opportunities, more food trucks that could be there and supporting the local businesses that operate the food trucks. If that's whatever your priorities are in that regard, I think it would be helpful for us to know that, please.
That's great. I would I would support that that Steve mentioned and Eric rephrased very well. Others? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so moving on, page 13, should $10,000 annually be budgeted, I think, to cover unplanned capital replacements as needed as recommended by the facility coordinator and CRPR staff? Board members? I think in the past, our board has said we don't necessarily love to have kind of like a pot of money just to just in case. But then in other cases, we do want that pot of money just in case. So we, what is this case? Is this a we do want to have that? We don't. Board members?
So I Oh, sorry. Sorry, I would want to know what is the vast expense in this area? Do we regularly have these sorts of expenses that, you know, $500, $700 that CAG has had to come and get it approved? Or or is this something new?
I actually had a similar thing, which was, is this something that we find that every year we need it? We just don't know this year what it's going to be next year? Or is this just sort of a just in case thing? And I guess that'd be a question for Lou is.
Yeah, so I think the basis of this recommendation out of the polls, facility condition assessment specifically, we have identified several end-of-life pieces and parts of those pole systems. So the filtering systems, the chemical treatment. So if a controller fails, that's not going to be something that we plan in a routine budget right now until we get the master facility plan in place and and get a little bit better with forecasting those expenses and really looking at the total cost of life instead of just waiting for break-in repairs. So this gives the polls team some flexibility to react more real time instead of potentially waiting a month or more to go through typical committee process, finance committee review, approval, recommendation. So it's trying to expedite some of those fixes or break repairs that historically have either been absorbed under an operating budget because it's an emergency. But more importantly, trying to track and trend those very specific costs of operation.
So if I understand you correctly, then Lou, this is this item is really intended, as you're speaking about it, to implement facility condition fixes from the pool for the pools. It's not really as broad as it was there in the in the comments?
No, so the the CIP that we forecasted for the pole pumps, we put the identifier in for the filter replacement, those larger items have all been forecasted in that CIP for 2022 within that that five-year look ahead. These would be the smaller items that we did not plan for, quite honestly, but could fail that would have an imminent impact on the pole operations.
Lou, it was my bad there. I actually forgot that we were underneath the pools capital item. So I kind of got lost. Okay, that I, yes, thank you. That makes sense. Okay, so I I changed my tune. I'm supportive of this or others? I don't know. Okay, yeah. And we should expect that annually recurring, Lou, the way it's written?
Yes, and I would say that this is another one of those benchmark comparisons. So as we get through this process and continue to develop a reinvestment strategy for all of the properties and the assets that COG has, looking at a capital contingency is a very common practice.
Thank you. That's great. I love hearing these words, by the way. This is great. I'm excited about facilities planning. Okay, so we're supportive of that. Bottom of page 13. Should lighting for the parking area and walkways to increase safety for visitors and during events at the nature center be installed? Estimated cost 36.5. We had some questions about this, again, in the vein of being non-disturbing. I liked I liked the answer, but I wouldn't mind if we as a board would put forward a comment where we would want to make sure that those that the the lights are explored to be with, I think it was like cut off, like that they wouldn't stay on all time. Like, so if our comment could be to explore all of the possible options to reduce impact of the lights? Could that be your comment?
And I think too, this is going to be one of the ordinance pieces as well. College Township has specific lighting ordinances that also have to adhere to.
Yeah, they let that scoreboard is up there, so. They don't have a lot of street cred on that front with me, but I'll I'll let them know that. They know that. But yes, yes. So I think our comment, though, is to to go above and beyond in making sure that at this nature-based facility that we explore all of the reducing impact options. So thanks. And yes, we are supportive, particularly if they incorporate some of those really good options. And then we're just cruising down page. Okay, we have, we're off the page 16. So oh, one one thing on the note about the last note, I think it is. After completion of Whitehall Road Regional Parks Phase One, completion of the Spring Creek Education Building, completing the majority of the task list from Center Region Park and Recreation Open Space Comprehensive Study, the Capitol Committee and CRPR Authority should consider hiring a consultant to review the master plans and phase two plans of John Hess, Oak Hall and Whitehall Road Regional Park. So I'm generally supportive of that, but I wanted to point out that the task list of the comprehensive study, so there's two task lists that I think of when that's referred to. One is the very monstrous one found actually in the study. There's like a lot of tasks on there. And then one is the like tiny one with three tasks on it that's take care of what you have. Do the MOU with State College Area School District and the other one is slipping my mind right now, but it's that reduced list that the authority came up with in a couple other work session meetings. Which one of the task lists are we referring to here? Because I would want to make a comment on that note, that if it's the large one in the comp plan, we're never going to get there in all of our lifetimes, probably, because there's a lot in there. And it involves things of municipal will too, like we have to, as a municipality, replace all of our park signs that cost like $30,000 a pop or something like that. So like, there's things that are not going to be checked off there anytime soon. So that's my question. I'll I'll stop asking it and let you guys answer.
To be honest, I'm not sure which one we're talking about. We were working off of two different comment guides tonight, so I didn't have that question researched in advance. But we'll we'll take your feedback, whatever it is, from the board and and address that with the rest of the municipalities.
Right. I think that my board has generally, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're all here, generally supported a re-refreshing of those master plans based on the data of the most recent comp plan. So I think that we are all supportive of that task, but we would all be concerned about the timing that seems to be indicated here. And we would want clarification. And I'm guessing our comment would probably be something like, you know, maybe not predicating it on finishing that entire task list, but maybe something, something else. Others? I mean, I'm, I think it's time now pretty much to start doing that because of all of the outdated cost estimates. So my thought on that is that if we were to get better cost estimates, we would know as municipalities what we've already not agreed to in loan form, but agreed to in master plan form. Like you've probably heard me say, the Whitehall Road Regional Park Master Plan from 2010 says that the total of this park budget is going to be $13 million. And I've said, I I've said you should probably multiply that by three or four. I think it would be important that we get a handle on that sooner rather than later. So we know what we're looking at in terms of how much it would cost to build them out. So I guess our comment is, when? When would that be? So we've reached the end of our comment guide exploration. Thank you much to Lou and Eric and Joe for being here and, you know, being in the hot seat and answering all those questions. It's really helpful and we appreciate collaboration with COG. And sometimes it takes a little bit extra work like this, but it's worth it in the end.
No, the dialogue was great. We really appreciate the the time that you've spent giving consideration to each of the items and the feedback that you're providing. So thank you very much. I know you've got a busy agenda ahead of you, so thank you and good night.
Thank you. Yes, we do. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, thank you much. Let's move on to new business. First up, we've got the consent agenda and I would love to entertain a motion to approve that.
This is Patty so moved.
Second?
Steve?
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, approved unanimously. And next, a public hearing on an addendum to a conditional use permit for 1445 West College Avenue Golf Course Maintenance Facility and Mixed Martial Arts Studio. Jenna Wargo, Director of Planning and Zoning, will introduce this.
Thank you. Included in the agenda is a conditional use application from Penn State University for a property located at 1445 West College Avenue. Applicant is requesting to continue the conditional uses currently operating at the site in accordance with Chapter 27, 304, 2E1 and 2. This is a similar conditional use to the Center Animal Hospital that the board saw not too long ago, probably May. There are two existing conditional uses on the property, one dated November 7, 2011. For the use of the property is a golf course maintenance facility. And there's one dated August 26, 2014, for the use of the property as a mixed martial arts studio. Both agreements are set to expire December 31, 2021. The property is located in Terrace Streetscape zoning district and both uses are not permitted nor prohibited. Given that both uses are continuing at the site and township is rewriting the Terrace Streetscape ordinance, staff is recommending an addendum to these agreements to permit the uses to operate for another five years at this location. All conditions included in the original agreements will remain, including the surety posted for the improvements. The township zoning ordinance and municipality's planning code require a public hearing on the application. The board must take action to approve or deny the application within forty-five days following the hearing. As part of, of the approval, the board may attach reasonable conditions and safeguards related to the conditional use standards detailed in the zoning ordinance, provided with the agenda as a copy of the memorandum from myself describing the findings of facts and recommended conditions from staff and planning commission reviews. Uh, the board will conduct a public hearing on the application for a conditional use permit for fourteen forty-five West College Avenue. Chair Danini will preside over the hearing. This evening, the board is asked to direct township manager to prepare a written decision for review and approval at the September seventh regular meeting.
Thank you, Jenna. Before I open the floor to public comment for this public hearing, I just have one question for clarification. Our question here is, we gonna, are we going to extend both of these things for five years, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
It is one application. They are two different uses. Um, but the uh request and staff's recommendation is to extend both for five years.
And so I, I actually lied about just having one question. It's a couple of questions about the same topic, so. Um, so one was approved in twenty-eleven and one was approved in twenty-fourteen, but they have not yet been um extended. This is the first extension. I'm sorry if I should already notice. Okay. And then the last question along that line is, this golf maintenance building, it's not consistent with the TSD. So if it doesn't become consistent with that, they have to do this forever? Or demolish, or like not make any changes to the building that would then require compliance with the ordinance?
Staff's um interpretation of these previous conditional use agreements for this type of use. Um, it was a brand-new ordinance when these conditional uses came through, and I think at the time, the board really wanted to see the design standards for the Terrace Streetscape implemented. So a lot of those conditions and surety were included as part of these conditional use approvals. And that's why staff were looking at rewriting the Terrace Streetscape District ideally next year. And do we really want to um hold these applicants to building to standards that we may not even have after next year when we rewrite the ordinance? So, yeah.
Thanks. Okay. All right. So I will open up the floor to public comments and public hearing. Would anyone care to speak on the matter either here in Zoom space or at the Ferguson Township Building? Okay, um, I'm seeing none. Um, so I am going to close the public hearing uh and move to board discussion of the matter. And just to recap, um, this is uh to extend the use uh or the um conditional use in order for the property owner to not have to implement the TSD design standards, which we are considering. Uh, we may be considering changing um through our TSD uh changes. Steve?
I, I guess I would say since we are looking at the uh review of the TSD and uh I think both uses are consistent with the current area around the, the building, and I haven't heard of any problems with them. I, I would favor going ahead and extending conditional use with the knowledge that we may be changing the district in the future anyway, so at this time, I, I think, you know, it, it fits in with the area, so I would favor uh going ahead and extending it.
Thank you, Steve. Others? I will speak up and offer my opinion, of course, if others.
I agree with Steve on that.
Okay. Lisa?
I'm in favor of extending it. Uh, maybe not five years. That seems like a long time if we get uh the ordinance rewritten. You know, within the next, say, two years, if it's rewritten within then, uh, you know, maybe three years extending this. Um, that would be my suggestion. Um, and I did want to mention that I had a question from a resident about a gravel road behind the mixed martial arts facility um between West College, I guess, yeah, back there um near the railroad line. And was that permitted as part of this, to be put in as part of this conditional use? Um.
My knowledge, that gravel road is unrelated to the uses operating at the site. There's at least nothing included in the agreements for that gravel road. I don't know if that's how golf carts are transported back and forth or what, but nothing in the agreements referenced that gravel road. I know Neil Sullivan uh with Penn State is also on this call. Maybe he knows. Um, it could have just been there.
Yeah, um, I'm checking the property map right now. Um, just give me one second. So that, that gravel road um is off of this particular property that we're talking about in terms of the uh non-conforming use. And um that is on the Penn State Golf Course property, that gravel road.
The gravel road is?
Yeah. And yeah, and Jen is right. That's how the golf carts get from the golf course to this storage and, and uh repair facility.
Lisa, was the assertion that that's a new road, or is that, was it, it's a new road?
That was, that was the um, the concern was that it was put in after the conditional use was granted.
So uh, from my knowledge, that road was put in when the conditional use is granted, so that we can connect the golf course to the property.
So it sounds like, yes, it was put in based on a condition.
So I, I, yeah, and I, I can verify that if you want and get back to you. Si- since it wasn't part of this particular one, four, four, five, West College. I, I don't have the answer for you tonight, but I can get that for you later.
I appreciate that. The concern was that it um goes through a recharge area. I'm, I'm not as familiar with this, maybe as some others are. Um, but you know, was, I guess the question was, was there a plan submitted for this? And when, when was that? And when was it approved? Um, but I understand if you don't have that on you, so maybe we can, we can address it in the future.
Right. So what I'll do is, um, I'll look up the history of that road, and I can respond to Jenna, and then she can disseminate the information.
That'd be great. Thank you. It's a good question, Lisa. Patty.
So, um, we're, at some point, we were having a discussion about hiring somebody to help us with the rewrite of the Terrace Streetscape, am I right?
Yes. Yep, we're, we're plunging into that next year. Yeah.
Well, that's why I just was, so when Lisa was suggesting three years, I just didn't know how quickly any of that would shake out.
Gotcha. Um, Dave, do you want to give a quick synopsis on that?
Sure.
The hiring of the consultant? Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think the intention would be that we begin the process with the selected consultant sometime early, you know, sometime in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two. So the full engagement, depending really on, I think, the outcome of the, of the process could be a few months, probably more likely it's in the one-year uh horizon if history is any indicator. I mean, this is a big lift, and there's a lot of sensitive issues that operate within the corridor. So there's likely to be a, a great deal of public involvement, which could add to the time it takes to develop. So I think a three-year uh horizon on the permit is certainly reasonable to expect that there'd be some amendments made to the Terrace Streetscape District. Some perhaps new design standards and guidelines that are issued as part of that amendment. And then presumably whenever this uh conditional use extension would expire, uh, the property owner would be obligated to build to those standards.
Thanks, Dave. So three years seems like a reasonable cushion then, because we've completed that process. Everything's in place. Um, so I would definitely be in favor of bumping that from five to three. They've already had many years, depending on the conditional use. Um, just so, yeah. So the timing just so happens to work out that right while they're expiring, we're going to be moving into this. So, yeah, I would be in favor of extending it for three years, uh, but not five. Uh, I do want to make a confused comment. Um, so I heard Steve calling you out um say that, that this was consistent with the TSD. So my, so the golf maintenance repair facility um is distinct from a golf course. I'm guessing that's how we're thinking about this. It's not the same as a golf course. Because when I'm thinking of the TSD, golf course definitely does not at all, to me, fit in with what the intent was for the TSD. This is a little bit tangential, but is, were you saying that just because it's the maintenance facility as a separate thing, it does fit in? Or did I misunderstand you?
Uh, I think I was really, should not have said it's consistent, but it's not inconsistent. In other words, it's not something that isn't allowed. And we've always treated the TSD as it's uh sort of a gray area. If it's not specifically, not specifically not allowed.
Right.
Then we allow it by conditional use. And this wouldn't, you know, this is not actually part of the functioning of the golf courses, a public entity, but, you know, several use side, that, that was what I meant with it. I guess I would say not inconsistent, rather than saying it's consistent.
Gotcha. Because while Neil is here, I'm going to have to say that it's been just like something that I've been saying for a couple of years now of what a great idea it would be, since golf courses are kind of like passe, you know, they're kind of yesterday's sort of idea in terms of recreation, because they're so resource-intensive and land-intensive. Um, and it's so close to the center there of town that the idea of building out the golf course in housing, like for students, um, right there, close to that core, seems like it's such a great idea. So I can't help but advocate for the idea of using that golf course eventually as infill, Neil, while you're here. Um, in that, you know, progressive um kind of planning, that, that walkable planning that we're working on in this area. So, um, so in terms of the conditional use, the board, uh, do we have a majority of support for um the three-year uh change to three years as opposed to five? Okay. All right. Um, just trying to get back to my agenda here. Okay, so we've got a, uh, we've got a motion in our agenda. Um, looks like we can go ahead and still use, because it doesn't include that information and staff. That is sufficient for you to go ahead and make that change? Great. So I would entertain a motion uh found in your agenda.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors close the public hearing and direct the Township Manager to present findings of fact in a written decision to the board for consideration the September seventh regular meeting.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Patty, so we've double closed the public, the public hearing now. It's definitely closed. Um, sounds like we have um a motion and a second, so all in favor of that, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we've got unanimous movement there. Um, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, here and after the Township adopting an Act five thirty-seven Sewage Facilities Plan Update. This will be introduced by Township Manager Dave Probaka.
Very much. Uh, so with your agenda is a copy of the resolution that's been prepared by the Center Regional Planning Agency. Senior Planner Corey Rilk is here. He just popped into view, uh, in case there's any questions on the study from the board. Um, as is pointed out uh in the narrative, there, this is a requirement that any time that plan is modified, it receive uh the endorsement by resolution of the participating municipalities, in, in this case, that are signatory to this agreement. So the specifics of the plan uh are to um essentially replace the composting facility at the University Area Joint Authority and in its play, and instead construct an anaerobic digestion and sludge drying facility to produce Class A bio solids uh in place of composting. So there's a link to the full study in the agenda. I've already told Corey that I'd appreciate audiobooks in the future. He's working on that. If there's any questions for him, he's here to answer and I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Dave. Um, all right. Do we have any questions for Corey? Thank you for being here. I have one.
Sure.
Okay, um, so, so we're no longer going to be producing compost at UAJA. Is that correct or incorrect?
They will be still producing a smaller amount, just not the same amount that they're producing now.
Okay. So, but that, um, but that, that new comp, that compost they're still going to be producing doesn't come out of this process that we're going to be doing that, okay?
No, not that I, not that I'm aware of.
Right. Okay, then follow-up question. Talk to me about bio solids that are going to be created. Do we, um, are we creating a disposal issue here? Educate me.
No, I think the best part that comes out of this plan is that through that bio solid uh preparation, there will be renewable natural gas that, that you, that the region can uh use. So it's, it's definitely beneficial in that realm. It's also, um, it's still a Class A bio solid, so they'll still be creating the same thing that they were with the compost. So it's the same level of bio solid. So there won't be any additional waste produced because of this.
I see. Well, that sounds like a win-win to me. All right. Any other questions? Okay, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion then.
Well, this, this one is a public hearing.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Um, let me open up the floor then to any public comment. None there, sentries? Okay. All right, I'm going to close that public hearing um and entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution adopting Act five thirty-seven Facilities Plan Update.
Pursued and seconded.
Do any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign?
Roll call.
Oh, Steve. All right, Dave, can we have a roll call vote?
This is presented as Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Mr. Ninni?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
All right, you knew the punchline. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we'll go on to the zoning appeals and requests for variances. Uh, Jenna Worgo will present our request for variance at sixteen oh nine North Atherton Street.
Thank you. On July sixth, twenty-twenty-one, Mike Patel submitted an application for zoning variance to the Planning and Zoning Department. Rita's Italian Ice located at sixteen oh nine North Atherton Street. Um, their zone general commercial, they're requesting a variance from twenty-seven to oh nine one and E yard requirements. The applicant is proposing to have an awning projecting beyond the front and side yard setbacks in order to provide more coverage for their patrons during bad weather and protect their employees um from the sun while working. Uh, the recommended motion is that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the request for variance at sixteen oh nine North Atherton Street.
Thank you, Jenna. And unless staff has some kind of uh resistance to it, I was going to suggest that maybe the board consider supporting this variance because we want to support businesses. It seems like very minimal impact unless I'm missing something. Um, I know we frequently remain neutral, and maybe Steve is going to school me on why we should, no matter what. Um, but unless he does, I would put that motion forward. Steve?
Well, I, I would just say I think that, you know, we normally remain neutral basically on the the, the fact that it is a zoning hearing board decision. And unless we have a particular reason to support or oppose it, that we remain neutral. I, I think that, yo, I agree with your, your reasons to support it, but I think that it's not specific to this. So I, I mean, I would prefer that we remain neutral, but.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
It could go either way. So.
Fair enough. If we did support it, Dave, we don't have to send a solicitor there to, to defend our support, do we? That's only if we oppose, correct?
Well, I mean, you can do either. In the past, when the boards opposed variances and they've sent the solicitor to represent the township, it's been largely because there's some kind of, um, it bigger issue at stake. So, and I think this might get back to perhaps the nature of Mr. Miller's comment. So floodplain variances, for example, because they have, uh, the potential to impact flood insurance rates for property owners in the township that even are completely unrelated to whatever the variance request is being granted for. That's often been a reason for the board to, to get involved. Uh, but yeah, if you supported this, uh, there wouldn't be a need to get the township solicitor. I would attend and just give testimony on behalf of the board. And my statement would probably be limited to, you know, whatever the, the, the board agrees to here tonight. And I would leave it at that.
Okay. All right. I've, y'all have talked me off the ledge a little bit. So I'll just, I'll just open it up to the board. Would you like to put a motion? Would anybody like to put a motion forward? If not, I'll go with neutral. Lisa, are you going to say something else?
Yeah, I will just say, I was going to make the motion too, but I'll just say, um, I'm not personally opposed to this, but I'd prefer to remain neutral because of what it is. It's an encroachment of the setback, which seems like it's probably, uh, a pretty regular occurrence. And so I, I wouldn't want to, uh, just pick out one to.
Good point.
To support.
That's a good point. Okay. You've definitely talked me off the ledge. I'm going to move that we remain neutral on the variance. Do I have a second?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Great. Uh, uh, all in. Now I'm all shell shocked that I shouldn't call for this. Okay. Thank you, Dave. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And next up, we've got a request for a waiver at 400 Plainfield Road, also introduced by Jenna Worga.
Thank you. Included in the agenda is an application for consideration of modification waiver from Sue and John Campbell, submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department. The Campbells own the property located at 400 Plainfield Road. Farmer's Way is a private driveway in the northern portion of that parcel. The applicant proposes to build a third single family home on the northern portion of the parcel and is requesting a modification waiver from the subdivision land development ordinance, specifically 221041B. And that is the requirement to complete a land development plan. There are two existing homes on the 181.3 acre property. And the property is zoned rural agriculture. Staff has reviewed the application and waiver and is recommending as a condition of approval that the applicants comply with all state regulations. Um, essentially waiving, um, the land development process at the local level. We are essentially waiving the township ordinances. Um, that's what we are discussing. They would still comply with zoning district requirements, zoning permit, et cetera. It's just the land development process that they would be.
And just to quickly orient the board, I shared my screen here and, and anybody viewing, you can see here along the top of my screen, West Whitehall Road intersection at Plainfield Drive, going south toward Pine Grove Road, uh, down here, excuse me, in Pine Ridge. Uh, this is the parcel is bisected by Plainfield Road. You can see it's the same parcel number on both sides of the street. One dwelling unit's on this side of the street. One dwelling unit is on this side. And the proposed dwelling unit, I believe, is somewhere in this, uh, tree mass here. So. Just to give you some lay of the land.
Thank you, Jenna, and thank you, Dave. Um, to any questions for staff? I have one question, Jenna, based on what you said. Um, typically in a single family home situation, I don't know why I'm thinking land development plans aren't required. And that's because.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was going to try to terribly answer my own question. I'll just defer to you who I asked it to.
Yeah. So the MPC essentially requires that, um, for any property, any single property, when there's more than one dwelling being proposed, uh, when you get to that two or more is land development.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then, um, in a, okay. Um, let's say for the Thistlewood properties that we did require a land development plan, um, did they have to comply with the lighting ordinance along with that, or is the lighting ordinance a standalone?
Lighting ordinance was part of those, um, reviews with those land development plans are very minimal, considering that it was just a residential home, but that was part of that process.
Okay. So, so if we were to, uh, give this waiver, uh, would this property have to be compliant with the lighting ordinance independently of the land development plan?
There would still be a review. It'd be a minimal review, um, given that it is just a residential structure. But, um, if they want to, um, get out of the lighting requirements of the SADA, that would be another modification waiver.
Okay, great. That answers that question. Okay, thank you. Uh, I have no other questions. Anybody else? All right, let's entertain a motion.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors grant the waiver from section 22 dash 104. Be subject to the condition of the applicants comply with all state regulations.
This is Steve. I'll second.
You, any further questions or discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, the heritage tree designation at 210 Dibler Road. This will be introduced by Dave Modrick, or Director of Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. In front of you is your very first heritage tree application. So you may remember in, um, January, the board adopted, um, the chapter 25, uh, ordinance 1062, amending chapter 25, which established a, um, process to designate heritage trees or significant trees. And the intent of the new part was to recognize protection of landmark, uh, important trees. And there's a distinction between a heritage tree and a significant tree. And I think while I, uh, talk through this, I'm going to share a screen so you can see the tree that we're talking about. So this is the old oak tree at 210 Dibler. And just to kind of put it in perspective, we'll swing over here. There's the Bayleeville Community Hall. But we're talking about the tree. So I'll come back to the tree. So, uh, the difference between a heritage tree and a significant tree, that they both recognize trees of landmark importance, age, species. Uh, with the heritage tree comes some responsibility and a commitment from the township to, uh, maintain these trees. And from the owner's standpoint, a commitment to, uh, provide an easement and allow the township to maintain the tree. So the easement gets recorded and it, and it runs with the property. So in this case, the applicant is requesting the heritage tree designation, uh, or a resolution allows for up to two such designations to be, uh, approved by the board in a given year. And, uh, a little story came along with this. It, it, it happens to be, uh, written down, sitting at my desk, uh, not too far from Centris, but, uh, I'm not in front of it right now. But I believe it may have been, uh, Ellen Hellman or one of our older township residents in his nineties that recalls, uh, you know, sitting under that tree in his youth, um, and that it was a very old tree at that time. Our arborist visited the site and estimates the age of the tree to be somewhere between 300 and 350 years old. Um, one of the significance of trees of this, uh, age, a- as you know, we have a, um, as, as a lot of Pennsylvania does, we have a, you know, a history and a background in, uh, the iron making industry of which, uh, trees were used for charcoal, which was one of the ingredients needed to make iron ore. I think it was limestone, iron and flux and charcoal. Um, and so, you know, a lot of Pennsylvania, including the western part of Ferguson's been timbered and this tree sur- survives some of that. So the process is the applicant nominates the tree. Uh, I believe Bill Keough is probably still at the township building. He was there when I, when I left. Um, he's the one that applied for this on, on behalf, uh, of the Bayleeville Community Hall. So the applicant applies for it. The arborist visits the site, reviews, reviews the, the tree, the application. It then gets presented to the tree commission. The tree commission in July during their tour stopped out here, took a look at the tree. So the arborist is recommending it for approval in the program. Uh, the tree commission's recommending it for approval. And, um, we did prepare a small plat, um, simple easement diagram. I think it's 70 by 100, um, just that goes around the canopy of the tree to allow the township, you know, access to maintain the tree. And there's a document that the applicant signs. And so, um, the recommend, recommendation to the board is that, upon finding the old oak tree at 210 Dibler Road to be of landmark importance, approve the designation of heritage tree subject to receipt of an executed tree easement document from the property owner.
Thank you very much, Dave Modrick. Um, yes, and the board also saw this tree when we were on our road tour with the capital improvement program, which.
Yes, thank you for reminding us of that.
Yeah. So that's very cool. Um, okay. We have a motion, uh, that's recommended in our agenda. Let's start with that.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors, upon finding the old oak tree at 210 Dibler Road to be of landmark importance, improve the designation of heritage tree subject to receipt of an execute, executed tree easement document from the property owner.
Do I have a second?
Patty, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? I'm very excited about our first heritage tree designation. Looks like I'm speaking for the board with all the, the head nods. That's great. Dave, did Dave Probaka, did you want to make a comment?
Just briefly, Dave M. and I have been talking about maybe some kind of a recognition certificate or something to accompany these in the future. This is, as Dave pointed out, the first one. So we're still kind of navigating our way through this, but, uh, we thought maybe like a certificate or something signed by, uh, the board or the chair. And then we could, they could display it in Bayleeville and any future designated trees that, that follow it. Hopefully we'll get more of them.
That sounds nice. Thank you for thinking about that. Uh, okay. Uh, looks like we have, uh, motion and a second. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. You've got unanimous approval for our first heritage tree in Ferguson Township. Hooray. Exciting. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to the tree commission. Um, all right. Uh, next up, consideration of a letter from the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors to Penn State University urging the university to require COVID-19 vaccinations for students, faculty and staff in advance of the commencement of the 2021, 2022 academic year. Oh, this will be presented by Laura Dinini, Township Supervisor. Um, well, uh, you know, this has been a discussion here in the region. Um, uh, Penn State University is, uh, in the Big Ten. Many of their schools are requiring vaccination for their, their students. Um, it's really a community health issue. Um, I think this, this is an important issue because we know here in the center region that, um, Penn State really is the main employer. If Penn State were to close down, we would experience a similar shutdown in the town. Um, we're seeing a surge of the Delta variant across the country. And unfortunately, it's putting communities right back into the same position that they were in, um, last year with emergency rooms, with ICUs, with hospital beds filling up and overflowing. Here in the center region, we know that very recently, Mount Nittany, our hospital has announced that they are scaling back, perhaps even discontinuing. I can't remember the details, but at least it is definitely affecting elective procedures that are being done at our hospital. So we are already in the beginning of that wave and the semester has not yet started. Um, so I thought this was an important issue, um, to speak up on. And so I asked the board to consider this. Um, so I'll just put that out there and see what folks think. Present it.
Yeah, I'm in, uh, full support of the idea. Um, but I think, uh, in one of the communications, uh, they raised the point. Uh, I think the Penn State representative, Sherry Ma, raised the point as to what the township is doing. And, um, I would support, um, you know, the township requiring vaccinations for the township employees too, as well as, uh, Penn State requiring vaccination of all Penn State students, faculty and staff.
Thank you, President. And others? Steve?
Um, I was initially not in favor of this, uh, sending this, the letter, but as I watch, there's a wave definitely approaching us. I, I think my initial reluctance, I really don't think that the students were the cause of the major outbreaks that we had in the past. I think really a big part of it came from, uh, the area around us, moving in toward, uh, State College. And I think, you know, in terms of a vector, that's still more likely. We've got two big things that I think are going to be major is the Grange Fair and the football games are going to be bringing a lot of people. Uh, and I think those could be, help, uh, spread the Delta variant. Uh, I also think that we're going to develop variant no matter what, just looking at the maps of how it's moving. But the biggest concern I have is if you bring, you know, even if there's, uh, an 85% of the students are vaccinated, you're still bringing thousands of students into this area that are not vaccinated. And given that the variant does have much stronger effects on younger people than the Alpha variant did, I think that could easily contribute to overwhelming our, uh, entire healthcare system. Because this, you know, this region has one hospital. And I think, uh, I'm in favor of this letter because of the number of people coming in that would be unvaccinated from, uh, outside this area. I think doubles our, uh, the vulnerability of our, uh, healthcare system. So I, I am in favor of it at this point.
Thanks, Dave. Patty?
Uh, well, I'm personally in favor of, of mandating. I mean, if I were king for a day, I think I've even said this before, I would make everybody plant fish person get it. But, um, it kind of goes back to what you were saying earlier when we were talking about the communications person for the Climate Action Committee. Even if it's good when you're telling people what they should do, I'm not sure how well that is received. Um, I totally agree with everything that Steve said about overwhelming Mount Nittany. So I might be inclined to support this a little more if we actually put real numbers as opposed to percentages to the population, just to give a, a, a clue. And these are the reasons. real numbers as opposed to percentages to the population, just to give a, a clue, and these are the reasons why we support it, you know, that if you have fifteen percent of unvaccinated students come in, what number is that of the Penn State population and, and what percentage of that gets? So put solid numbers to, as opposed to percentages. Because I think sometimes people get lost in percentages and, and lose sight of the fact that these numbers could really overwhelm Mount Nittany, that one community hospital that we have. But I, I'm really on the fence about this. I, I support it personally. I just, again, it sounds like telling people what to do.
Thank you, Patty. And Lisa.
Um, I'm a hundred percent in favor of sending this. There was even another um court decision today upholding a university mandate. So I think uh, the only thing I had in the back of my mind was to include, perhaps if we were uh gonna ask them to adhere to some timeline, given that um, you know, classes are beginning. So um, we can't say before classes start really was to say, I think that the F- full FDA approval is really expected here soon. You know, the last thing I heard on the radio was maybe within a month or something. So I, I don't know how, really how far we are from that, but if that's the case, indicating that, you know, once there's full FDA approval, what really is the argument to not require it? So if that was some consideration, that would maybe get somebody who's on the fence uh to support, to support that. I'm supportive of it without that. I think that the emergency authorization is um is inclusive enough to me to request that they require that. Uh, we're not going to get out of this unless we get more people vaccinated because the virus will continue to mutate and it will be even more difficult to come up with boosters to fight it. So I think it's absolutely time that we uh set, you know, set a line and say, you know, this is, this is absolutely necessary.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, so what I think I've heard here is that right now, we definitely have a board majority to move forward with this. Um, I then want to address Patty's suggestion of adding some real numbers into the letter. Um, just so, just, we can do a little math for folks so they really understand the numbers that we're talking about. I just so happen to be on a, a lister for a community group who were talking about the numbers today. And um, they uh, I'm, you, you all know I'm not great at math, and they were really helping me understand um what the, the numbers with the percents are. So it's, the admin uh is stating that eight, eighty-eight percent of the students reported being fully or partially vaccinated, but that's of the seventy-one percent who responded. Um, so that is, the, according to this person's math, is sixty-two percent of students are partial, at least partially vaccinated. And so like, what does then that leave with the unvaccinated? Absolute number is what you're talking about, Patty, if I understood your, okay. I am not opposed to that. Um, I'm also not opposed to sending the letter as is. Um, I wanted to he- hear other board members' thoughts on that.
I mean, I could go either way. So if it is sixty-two percent, and we can approximate, uh, you know, even a lower number of forty thousand students, then, you know, about, even if that sixty-two percent comes to seventy percent, and we have like thirty percent unvaccinated, that's twelve thousand stu-
Right.
Coming in, in one week uh with either not vaccinated or not known. And um, so that, those numbers are pretty large. And the number of, I think, beds in the hospital is between ten, uh, twenty and forty, depending upon how you calculate what equipment is needed. And so that's just very few in comparison to, I mean, if you, if you look at the hospitalization numbers, and I don't know with the Delta variant, what the rates are, even, you know, less than one percent would, you know, would actually overwhelm our hospitals.
Scary. So the question is, would we like staff to put in a sentence about what the percent, an estimate of a general number of what the percent is based on the survey results? So something like a statement of at sixty-three percent partly vaccination rate, that, that leaves approximately X thousand students that are coming in unvaccinated. Is that basically the gist of um what you were thinking, Patty? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because sometimes I think percentages are easy enough to say, oh, well, it's only, you know, twelve percent. But, but when you put a real number to it, it is alarming because it could be like potentially the, the number that is equal to the population of Ferguson Township or something.
Yeah, I, I think we should, I, I mean, I, I would support any uh numbers like that, but at least if you say that there are, you know, with potentially over ten to fifteen thousand students, unvaccinated students coming into a small town with less than fifty ICU beds. It's an overwhelming number. Something like that would be good for me.
Okay, so I'm seeing all heads of the board not in agreement. Um, Dave, was that um direction clear on that small addition to the letter to include some absolute numbers on, based on the survey results that Penn State did, some absolute numbers of what we were thinking that means?
Yeah, I think we can, we can draft some language and then maybe then send it over to you uh to take a look at where we
Great. Great. Um, and then Lisa talked about a timeframe. Um, I personally, I think that we have a huge cohort study going on. Um, we've, so many have gotten the vaccination. Um, I don't necessarily want to pin this to any kind of approval. But if there is, I, I don't know if I see anything. Um, I think we say before semester begins. Uh, we don't put any timeframe, I guess. Uh, returning. Uh, so we could maybe add a phrase as soon as logistically possible or something like that if we wanted to.
I think that would be good because we don't know how long it would take them to implement something like this.
Yeah. We understand.
Should be as soon as possible. Yeah.
Right. So can we add maybe a, a phrase like that in Dave? Okay, great. Now, we haven't entertained a motion yet. Um, I think we're all pretty aligned at this point with those changes. Um, so I would love to entertain a motion, which can be found in your agenda.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors authorized the chair to endorse the letter to Penn State University officials urging the university to require COVID nineteen vaccinations for all non-exempt students, faculty and staff prior to the commencement of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two academic year.
We have a second.
This is Steve. A second.
Okay, any further discussion on the matter? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay, it sounds like motion passes unanimously. That's great. Thank you all. Um, and next up, we've got the board member request, Radio Park Elementary School Crossing Guard. This will be introduced by Lisa Strickland and Patty Stevens. Okay, don't all jump at once now.
I can start. Thanks, Laura. Um, so just for a little bit of context, I'll jump us back. Um, this issue was first brought to us when the State College School District reached out to the township to address state safety concerns at the intersection at Radio Park Elementary School. The intersection there is Cherry Lane and Martin Street. There are only stop signs currently on uh the Martin Street ends of that road and not on Cherry Lane that uh goes through the intersection. Um, there has been a crosswalk painted at one um, on one of the four portions of the, of the um intersection there. And there will be a study uh down at the township on uh whether it's warranted to put in additional stop signs. So um, that study, I don't have an update on when that is. I know it's coming quickly. Um, but I, we are not clear on whether or not that will be done before school is actually back in session, which is next week. Um, so right now, we're requesting uh that the board um discuss and potentially approve a crossing guard for this intersection for this school year. Uh, that would alleviate the safety concerns prior to any additional stop, stop signs going up. But also, it would be a great signal to drivers accustomed to driving this route that there are students who cross there. All students who leave the school by bike or foot have to cross at that corner since there's no sidewalk on the school side of Cherry Lane or the other side of Martin Street. Um, and then I'll just throw in, beyond the safety concerns, I think the township should be doing everything we can to encourage safe alternative means of transport to school. So I would love to use this as an opportunity to just promote these um kind of, you know, safe pedestrian and uh bike transportation routes to school. I've mentioned the Safe Routes to School program before, which promotes safe walking and biking within a mile of the school. Um, and this directly speaks to that. And um, then the last thing I'll say is that uh, you know, we're discussing doing this for this year and then looking at it again next year when maybe the numbers of walkers and bikers have changed, there's been an opportunity to assess uh the situation. Um, that's all I wanted to start with. I know that we do have maps and diagrams that Centris can share as needed, but um I wanted to let Patty speak. And then I know we have some um members uh of the public who have hung in there um uh to share their thoughts too, but I'll let um Patty uh share it this time.
Thank you, Lisa.
I don't really have anything to add. Lisa, you said it all beautifully. So um, I will just say that I did re- I did get um one other correspondence um from a grandparent who picks up their child there or their grandchildren there, and they just asked um for about the empty field at, across from Radio Park at the corner of Cherry and Martin, that it be mowed or somehow um, it's hard to see people because Cherry, because Cherry doesn't have a stop sign. Sometimes it's hard as you're approaching Radio Park from Martin Street to see, and if the vegetation could be cut back there. But other than that, everything that Lisa said, yes.
Is that field, question Patty, is that? I was just recently at that intersection. Is that not a field, but more like a clump of trees, or is that a grassy field?
I don't know what it is. It's like sort of a retention basin sort of affair, but I don't know what it is.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks, Dave. Is that a township maintained?
No, it's privately owned.
Okay, okay, thanks.
If there's
Thank you.
site distance issues, we can, we can look into that and see, and we can turn back.
Thanks. And thanks for that intro. Um, I guess I, I certainly wouldn't mind opening it up the, to the floor uh, the floor to the residents that have been so incredibly patient through our really long cog discussion, et cetera, um if they wanted to to speak on the matter. Would anyone care to? You can, okay, Chloe, I see your yellow hand up. Just remember to unmute. Yep, take your time and unmute. There you go. You got it.
So hi, I'm Chloe House, and thank you all so much for your time that you spend on these meetings. It's incredible. Um, just to give you some perspective from me, this is my third child to go through Radio Park, and I know there have been previous traffic studies and previous principles that have advocated for a crossing guard, and it just has gotten stopped along the way. But it is so wonderful to see the crosswalk. That is a first, and it's awesome. And now there are um pedestrian crossing two signs, I think. But it's a four-way intersection, and I'm pretty sure there's only two stop signs in the four directions. And there's just cars turning every which way and buses and pedestrians. And these pedestrians are little people. You know, most of them are walking with parents. But once children get to like fourth and fifth grade, sometimes parents let those kids go by themselves. And there's a lot of little like townhouse apartments around there that children can walk to. Um, i- it would be so great to have a crossing guard so we prevent anything terrible from happening. There have been many near misses that um staff at Radio Park who see that intersection every day all morning have seen, and it would just be really sad for anything to happen. And I think the cost of putting in a crossing guard an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon would, would be so worth preventing anybody from having an injury.
Thank you, Chloe. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, I'm probably not going to pronounce your name right. Um, is it Yoti?
It's Jody. And apologies. Yeah, it's Jody. And I'm sorry I can't turn my VJ on, so um
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Please.
But uh, yeah, but again, you know, like Chloe, I first wanted you all to thank, uh, I wanted to thank you all for actually taking this up and especially wanted to thank Lisa and Patricia for giving us a very patient ear, even like walking with one of us. Uh, I think, I think Lisa, you walked with Mark, so you had a firsthand experience of what it's like to walk from our neighborhood to uh to Radio Park. And uh, again, I just want to echo all that Chloe has um, has shared with you. Uh, the only thing I want to add is that I've actually had two near misses. Uh, one time biking, uh, my husband was biking with our kids. And once I was walking and crossing Cherry Lane over to Radio Park where the car, because there was no stop sign, uh, did not uh initially stop. And then they realized that you know, everybody else on the other side that was getting out of Radio Park was stopping to give us a chance to cross the street. And by the time all of the other cars stopped, this person was ready to go again. They stopped and they, so it was kind of a, kind of a very, uh, I, I think there is a, there is definitely a, a high risk of uh an accident taking place there. And I, again, I'm very grateful that there is a crosswalk that is, that has been painted now. There is signage. Uh, but I do feel that there is need for uh more safety measures, and having a crossing would be such an um, such an important um, uh, you know, uh, in addition to, to guaranteeing everybody's safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. And Mark.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I, I'll, I'll just completely echo Chloe and Jody, and, and I, I want to thank the, the the whole board for approving the traffic study. I think that's going to be really important. Um, and then to Lisa and Patty for walking with me and my, my son Ali. Um, we, we were able to show them some of the concerns. Um, I, I wanted to, to add in just a, a couple of points. One, I saw in the agenda that the staff recommendation to wait for thinking about the crossing guard and hiring one potentially until after the traffic study. But I, I just wanted to, to ask that you consider doing it immediately for the start of the school year so that we don't begin the school year in, in, in the, in the same spot um where we've been in the past with, without having a crossing guard. Um, I think even if the study were to bring back, uh, were to, to ask for a four-way intersection, I s- I still think a crossing guard is going to be important to have. Um, you know, stop signs would be wonderful. Um, but it, but I think crossing guards add in an element that protects drivers, pedestrians and, and bikers. So I think that's really important. Um, I also, I had shared a statement or kind of some pictures with Lisa and Patty. Um, I, you know, there's a lot of overgrowth along the Cherry Lane. Um, and um, Patty was referencing uh from a, a grandparent, you know, it's hard to see if you're, if you're driving in some aspects. Um, so, you know, it's not just the crossing guard, but I think a crossing guard will be a wonderful step forward in terms of safety on top of having the crosswalk painted that, like, we were cheering when we saw that. Um, it, 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 that looks great along with the signs. So um, so again, thank, thanks. I'd be happy to speak to any questions about like personal experience, but we really appreciate the work that you're, you're doing.
Thank you very much, Mark. And Chloe, I see your hand is still raised. Is that a new comment, or is that just a, you know, your hand is not part of your body in Zoom, so you didn't remember to put it down?
I didn't remember to put it down, but I will just add that I had a child hit by a car at Park Avenue and Allen Street. And she was okay. She was able to walk up, not that it, it, it was damaging to her body and her mind emotionally. But I just want you to know that this does happen because drivers make mistakes and her, her being hit was an accident on the driver's part, but these things do happen. So I just want to assure people that this is for a really that this is for a really good cause.
Thank you very much, Chloe. And thank you, Centris for sharing. I am going to ask Dave a question or two about timing so we can fully understand the timeline for the rest of the study to be completed. And then if we were to move forward with hiring, what that would look like. And then I have a couple of other questions, but we'll start with that one, if you don't mind, Dave. Could you just talk us through the improvements that we've done? We've done a few. Now we're going to do a study and that's going to look at X, Y, and Z and that timing.
Yes. So as has been pointed out already in the discussion, we did the mid-block crosswalk assessment guidelines that are put forward by PennDOT. And of course, as we expected, a crosswalk at the intersection was warranted, so it was installed as part of our line driving contract, which just took place a couple of weeks ago. So good news there. I unfortunately don't know when the stop intersection study is going to be completed. I know that it's on the township engineer's work plan and he recognizes that it's a priority. And so I expect it will be done soon. It's not a big study. It's not something that I think once we start putting the data together is going to take a long time to complete. In fact, recently there've been traffic counters placed out there by us so that we're beginning to, I guess, put some of the data together to conduct the assessment. If the study warrants a three or four-way stop intersection, we can have the signs installed pretty quickly. So, you know, I think part of, and not to be presumptuous, but in part of the nature of my recommendation in the agenda is does the board want to wait when I expect will be a study that's concluded in pretty short order? And if a four-way stop is in fact warranted there and installed there, you still want to proceed with the hiring of a crossing guard. So really it's, it's a board discussion item and however you want to proceed is, is fine with me.
Thank you, Dave. I do have one other question or group of questions and it Centris, you don't have to share it again, but it does relate to the map. The way I read that map, that perspective is really looking at pedestrian traffic coming down Cherry Lane. And so I'm making an assumption right here, right now, that the folks that are here speaking about it are coming from that direction. That could be an incorrect assumption. But my, my questions are about that space of Atherton Street. So anybody that's crossing at this intersection right in front of Radio Park is coming, most of the people are coming from across Atherton. And to me as a parent, now a grandparent, it seems like it, to me, it seems like that Atherton intersection is so much scarier than this intersection. If you're comparing, once it's got stop signs, so once it has stop signs at that intersection and Atherton has a red light, maybe neither are ideal, but are we still perceiving that this intersection will be worse than the Atherton intersection across? And then my, I think my question to staff is is that intersection a space that's shared jurisdiction between Ferguson Township and the borough? I know our line is like so close to that. I think we have half of it and they have half of it maybe in that space. Do you know, Dave, where that line is?
The line is a little bit closer to the borough, I guess, or closer to park. It's entirely our intersection there at Jerry and North Atherton.
Okay, thank you. So then the question to the residents, are you finding that that Atherton crossing is not a burden? It's not, it's not too bad to make it across there in comparison to that next intersection? Yes, Mark, thank you for responding.
Yeah, so Atherton is not, not easy to cross. That's right. Cars are coming fast and, and especially when it's sunny. Cars that are going up the hill will sometimes go right through that stoplight because they can't.
It's hard to see. Yes.
Yeah. So it's not that Atherton is not an issue, but Atherton does have walk signs. We were able to press the signals. That's helpful. And whereas the intersection in front of Radio Park, un- until the crosswalk was painted, like there were no indicators that anyone would be crossing there. And then I think there's something about, you know, Atherton is so big that it, it's almost at least more visible for us walking than this small little road that cars are used to, you know, fly in down. So.
Yes, understood. Thank you for that, that insight. I, I, as a driver, I also see you know, that, that, that road Cherry Lane over there is like a cut through off of Atherton. Like, woo, I can get off Atherton and I can cut through here and zip right through. I'm one of those people. I mean, I'm careful, but I'm thinking of it as a zip right through. That's how I'm thinking about it. Jody, I think your hand maybe was up next?
Yes, thanks Laura. So I think, you know, adding to what Mark just said, I think what makes Cherry Lane more complicated is also because there are no sidewalks on both sides, right? So if we were crossing Atherton to get onto the sidewalk, right? And then, you know, then we have to go down and then cross towards Radio Park once again. So we cannot cross on the side of the school because there is no sidewalk or the sidewalk just ends. So I think that makes it, you know, so complications actually get, you know, much bigger once we have actually crossed Atherton. And then how, what do we, how do we negotiate the road from Cherry Lane and Atherton down to Radio Park? Because there are no sidewalks, proper sidewalks on both sides.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you. And Chloe?
I just want to point out that not everybody is coming down from Atherton as across from that grassy field you all were talking about. There's that group of apartments and townhouses rentals that are in there and those people walk to school also.
Okay, gotcha. Yep. Okay, and then I had one other question. I don't know if the staff know the answer to this because it's not, it's not our jurisdiction, but does maybe the residents do, does the, the SCASD offer a bus that crosses Atherton where you folks are walking? Is there, is there a bus service available? Okay. And this is, we're just learning about this whole, like it's not a walk school or something and we're just trying to wrap our brains around that, how that works.
Yes, as, as I understand it, if, if the school is not a designated walkable school or, or whatever, they have to provide an option for all the students that are within their service area to be able to bus to school. So I, I do believe that the option is there, but of course, you know, still walk if.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Dave.
I don't, I don't know how it relates to the, the engagements of a crossing guard. That part's still not clear. For example, like I'm not certain that if it is a designated school, walkable school that, that the school district will provide a crossing guard or provide funding for a crossing guard. But I'm, I'm sure that in this case, a crossing guard would be entirely funded by.
Yes, yes. One more question before I go to you, Mark, to Dave. Dave, the question is that, so I asked about the timeline for the study. Could you then talk about what your, if we were to move this forward tonight, the timeline for hiring a crossing guard?
Well, it certainly just depends on the interest that we get. We had a very difficult time filling our last vacancy for a crossing guard at Ferguson Elementary, but of course, this is a different geographic area, so presumably we'll be drawing a different pool of applicants. It's a part-time assignment, so it's not a, a full commitment for somebody. So I would expect maybe a retiree or, or somebody that might be able to schedule might be interested. So we could see what happens. We do have interested applicants from the time we begin interviews to when we can bring somebody in for a position like this, probably a few weeks. So all told, maybe a month is a reasonable estimate.
Gotcha. Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Okay, and Mark, you had your hand up. I wanted to go to you for your comment.
Just to say that, thank you Laura, that I had reached out to the school board directors and asked about the walkable designation and they said they weren't familiar with that. So I'm, I'm not sure what that is. But yeah, we, last year SCASD asked for parents to try and get their kids to school in means other than the bus just because of social distancing and, and, you know, fear about COVID. So that's why we started walking, but we, 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 we loved it. We, we want to keep doing it. And partly because we think just, you know, not burning fossil fuels on the way to school, if we can do that is a wonderful thing. But, but yeah, this safety concern is, is the one barrier to walking that, you know, we, we still did it all of last year and we want to keep doing it, but it would be really helpful, I think, for us and for others.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to go to a little bit of board discussion about this before I ask for a motion. Do, do any board members want to discuss the matter or maybe we're ready for a motion? Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that any reluctance we might have as far as crossing guard is definitely not anything financial or a feeling that's not necessary. I think that anything the reason for any discussion of it is just a matter of, it's hard to hire people for this job. And I think, you know, even if we authorize hiring, it doesn't guarantee somebody will be hired. And I just want to be sure people understand that, that it is sometimes a difficult thing to keep somebody in the job. But we certainly recognize the concern and, you know, we're are in favor of keeping safe, keeping things as safe as possible. That's
Thanks, Steve. Thank you. Other board members?
So I have a question. After the, let's suppose that if we do get stop signs and if you do get stop signs, even after that, will we continue to have the crossing guard or are we thinking of this as a stopgap measure until other traffic measures are installed?
Good question. Lisa, looks like you're.
Yeah, I would just say I was suggesting a year-long position mostly so that, but at the end of the school year, the board could reassess the need and interest in light of having stop signs and not, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully increasing pedestrian and bike travel there to school. So I, you know, I, I think it would be beneficial even with the stop signs there to really highlight that this is a school crossing area to those commuters and people who use this so regularly and, you know, get them used to, no, there's an increased foot and bike traffic here and I think, I think, you know, barring the difficulty in hiring somebody, I think this might be the easiest way to really get that attention of the drivers.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, my, my position is that I would support having a crossing guard right away and then let's have the study and see what comes up.
Present it. Patty?
I'm, I'm completely in support of a crossing guard and even if they get four stop signs, I'm still in support of having a crossing guard and four stop signs.
Thank you. I guess I, maybe I'm the only one left that hasn't expressed an opinion yet or I'm not sure if Steve actually expressed his opinion, but we'll let him slide for now. Okay, very good. I also am supportive of this and I'm supportive of its reevaluation in a year, but I want to be honest about that because sitting in the supervisor seat for a couple of years now, I realize how sometimes issues can play very badly in the public eye. So for example, if we were to hire this crossing guard and then next year decided we've got the stop signs, it seems like they're not needed. Then we're the board that took away the crossing guard. So, you know, it's, it's a bit of a difficult position to be in, in that respect. So I guess I'll just, I'll just say that. And I also think that when I was researching this and looking at maps, one thing that was very striking to me is that when we're looking at the bike plan, which I was looking at to see how we want to amend our official map, we have the same kinds of barriers and crossing issues that we've got here and it in, in the same areas even. So like Atherton, it's a big planning thing. Like we've got to cross Atherton if we want to not be in a car. Oh, it's dangerous. So when we're looking at this as it's just one little piece, it's one little spot in that larger plan, you can see that somewhere in that area, there's a huge need for safe pedestrian crossing to get from one side of Atherton to the other. And there's lots of neighborhoods that are disconnected by that thing of Atherton Street. And so when I was talking about this a little bit with another board member, I just said, you know, I think this is an opportunity to work at a regional level to try to integrate that bike and pedestrian plan with a safe walk to school kind of plan. And I, I'm just going one step higher here. This isn't really about the crossing guard, but I didn't take a motion yet, so I could talk about anything I want. So I guess what I'm saying to my fellow board members and anybody in the region that's listening to this is that I think this is like an example that can bring us to a higher place in planning in this respect. And that we should put that forward in our various cog committees and hope that maybe CRPA, the Regional Planning Agency might take the lead on looking at that pedestrian, I think it's actually only a bike plan, but I'm saying pedestrian and bike plan to include safe walking to schools and to engage the school district on that. Because clearly there's some confusion about how we can best partner together. It's not really about finger pointing of who's responsible, but like we're all responsible and how can we take a piece of that? So get off my soapbox, back to the matter at hand and I would ask to entertain a motion. And you can find one in your agenda.
Yeah, I present it with move that the Board of Supervisors hire a crossing guard until and perform the warranted traffic improvements that are installed at the intersection. No, this is not, okay. So I presented would move that the Board of Supervisors hire a crossing guard at the Park Forest Radio Elementary School crossing.
Thank you, present it. Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion now on the motion specifically?
I would say that we might want to reword that motion slightly instead of saying that we would hire a crossing guard just we authorized the hiring of a crossing guard.
Noted.
Because the board doesn't actually do that.
Noted and, and completely agreed. Yep, we are authorizing the hiring by the township manager or his assigns, I believe is the language. Okay, it looks like there is no further discussion, so I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign? All right, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the, to the residents who showed up who walked our supervisors around and helped us further understand this issue and thanks for sticking with us here this evening.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
All right, moving on, if we all can make it through to the end, we are at our reports period. And first up, the cog committee reports. Patty, you're up first with human resources.
Great. Basically, a lot of what we discussed, we've already discussed when we were talking about the cog plan earlier. Let's see, we discussed the difference between the staffing, that what, what was a staffing study and a salary survey. College Township is, looks like if they go through with the the, the wage survey, College Township would piggyback on that and really basically anything that was listed in the agenda, it was. anything that was listed in the agenda, it was cut and dried. So I'm sorry.
It's, thank you. Thank you, Patty. Uh, any questions? All right, let's move on to the Joint Public Services and Environmental and Transportation and Land Use Committees. They win the longest name award.
Yes, you'll be happy to know that we, um, will be changing the name of that. That's one thing we talked about. So let me just pull up the agenda here. Uh, we discussed the draft resolution forming the land use and community infrastructure or Lucy Committee. And let's see, so we looked at, I think this is the item with the resolution, combining them. We did some minor changes in the wording there, took out the mission statement so that we could reword that a bit. Uh, we left it fairly broad, knowing that we'd go back and refine the tasks a little bit later. So that was that and you'll see that at general forum. Um, there's an update on the accessory scale solar project. I think that I sent you all the presentation on that. And then we had two items on affordable housing. One was uh, CRPA staff and some regional planners had met with uh, the Center County Association of Realtors and the Pennsylvania Home Builders Association about looking at conducting a study on how best to facilitate the increase in the stock of affordable or attainable housing. Uh, they think they can get some funding for that study. I did bounce this off of Jenna Wargo who, um, just, you know, kind of reiterated her support for this kind of study. We had talked about this and then the following item, number seven, which is an affordable housing and homelessness services gap analysis. Uh, in our CIP meetings about doing a regional study on affordable housing. And so this, uh, number seven speaks a little bit more to that. The scope of that isn't entirely defined, that'll come back to us. So, uh, the committee approved, um, moving forward with both of those items. I think that was about it.
Lisa, a question on that. So what you're saying is that at the region, they're moving forward to whatever next step. This, this regional affordable housing study uh, that shows up in our Ferguson Township CIP that we as a group talked about and we all said, hey, this is regional, why is this in our CRP, CIP? And it's kind of like a placeholder, but so this is kind of directed at staff, I guess, is we can expect then that to disappear out of that CIP because it should show up in a cog CIP because it should only show up in one. Is that correct?
Uh, well, right. So if they're gonna
Okay.
duplicate the efforts, at least to the degree that the board is comfortable with the scope of work. You know, meaning if there are things that the regional study isn't considering that the board or the board at the time may want to focus on, it might still can carry forward and perhaps a modified scope, but generally, yes. If they're doing the work, then, then there's no need for us to do it.
Thanks, Steve. Just keeping, keeping up with all the details. Thank you very much.
And that, I'll just say, that was kind of where this action, the action step for that item went to was for the members to go back to their municipalities, engage the uh, interest in supporting this, maybe using American Rescue Plan funds. So Jim May had felt kind of, uh, um, you know, there may be some funding opportunities there, so he wanted to get this moving if some municipalities will rely on that. Um, you know, I included in the discussion that we had already approved some funding for this, so we would be supportive of that. Um, but any, anyways, I'm just trying to point out that that's where it's at. It really hasn't moved, uh, much beyond that. So we'll have a lot of information in the future.
Thanks, Lisa, but just, just reiterate our position in the past, though, this would come through the cog budget process. It's not going to be, like, when I hear them talking about ARPA, all of a sudden I'm thinking, oh, and in addition to the cog budget, here is another way that you can use your ARPA money. We're not thinking that. We're thinking this is going to go through the cog budgeting process. If we then as municipalities want to use that particular pot of money, we can. If not, no, whatever. Okay. Just making sure. That was my only question.
That's my understanding.
Thanks.
There's not been, I mean, I'll just say broadly, there hasn't been, I think, any formal requests from cog to the municipalities for any, uh, Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, it's possible also that they're considering other programs that aren't the municipal dollars. But I think we can expect that cog will reach out to the participating municipalities for either assistance in something like this or similar projects. Just determining whether any of that funding would be available. So I don't know what that'll look like yet, but I also don't want to set the expectation that cog won't approach the municipalities for some consideration of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, uh, that's been attributed to.
Okay, through the cog budget, through the cog budget, through the cog budget.
That, that would probably be the appropriate place for it.
Excellent, 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 excellent.
We'll see when that, when that time comes.
Absolutely. Okay, um, next up, we've got Climate Action and Sustainability Committee. I actually ended up attending that meeting. We, oh boy, let me refresh my memory a little bit. We, uh, talked a lot about the climate action plan. We focused on certain parts of that plan. Um, and Pam Adams got feedback from the committee. Nothing really in my mind is standing out in particular. The only, uh, I did make the comment on um, how we are relying, uh, the way our plan is written, we tend to rely on the end user. So we have this housing stock and then it's the person that bought the house's responsibility to make it green. As opposed to, we are trying as a region to drive the builders into building green places so that the cost is not always outsourced to the end user. So I did make that comment on the plan in general to try to focus on that place where we can make the most change at the building level, even though it's probably, um, also very, very difficult. Um, as we know, those lobbies are very strong and really are looking at cost, um, cost recovery. And then that was pretty much the main topic that we, that we discussed. Trying to run through the agenda here. We have a timeline, uh, as I mentioned earlier, that's going out to the various committees for comment. And it looks like, uh, November 22nd would be the general forum where we should receive the presentation on the, the end, the end plan and considering, uh, consider adoption of it. Um, so it's really the whole meeting. Any questions? Okay, um, moving on to the Special Executive Committee, uh, I attended that where we discussed, um, writing a letter uh, requesting Penn State mandate vaccinations for their students. Um, I believe students, faculty and staff were all considered. Um, the result of that meeting was that we were trying to implement a new policy about COGS communication with other entities. And, uh, in the, that new policy, um, and, uh, in the implementation of that policy is sort of revealed that we didn't really have like the criteria we needed to move forward. If it turned out at that level, we had one dissenting municipality and the rest were in agreement and that's what occurred. There were see, Half Moon wasn't present, so there were four municipalities for, and then college against. Um, college is now working on what they feel like they feel good about as a letter. So we'll see that at our next executive committee meeting on Thursday, the 19th. So that still might come out of executive, that letter might still come out of executive. Um, or if not, it will go to general forum, which is what the last executive committee meeting uh, determined, um, unless of course college, uh, decides to align with the rest of the folks and then we'll move forward. Any questions on that? Okay, and then lastly, uh, public safety, I also attended that meeting. Uh, we did have a discussion about municipal police reporting to cog public safety and the committee really aligned around the fact that police are really not the jurisdiction of cog. And although the word, the name public safety does lead others to believe that really that police fall under that, that our unique structure really, it doesn't fall under that. Um, but we did come to the idea that maybe, you know, extending an invitation to police, uh, to the police departments um, in the municipalities and at Penn State, uh, for annual meeting where we have uh, emergency management coordinates, a, a, a very large public safety meeting with all of the agencies, state police and PennDOT and EMS. And so we decided, let's invite the chiefs to that meeting. Um, we also decided, uh, to go ahead and move forward with, uh, putting uh, $1,500 request in the budget to fund the EMS legislative meeting for 2022. That funding has taken a huge hit, uh, because the way it's funded, um, through COVID, it just, the money really dried up. So it will not happen if the center region doesn't support it and there's other sponsors involved with supporting it. So we're not alone in that. But we decided we do want to support it. It's important time for our emergency management folks to get the ear of, um, important state legislators. And we, uh, did go ahead and recommend that the facilities committee explore options to increase fire department operation space and consider the department's recommendations for a support facility. So that's going to be going to facilities. Um, so you'll see that Patty come through. Um, any questions? Okay, uh, next up, we've got staff reports. Uh, Dave Prabokha, you're up with the managers report.
Thank you. Um, my report and the other department heads' reports are in the packet and I can answer any questions that the board may have or get answers to any questions if I can't answer them. I do have one item to mention that I'd like board, uh, discussion on, but before I get to that, I guess if there's any other questions on the reports.
I just have a question, Dave. Um, I see that our, our Ferguson Township Climate Action Committee met, uh, Monday, the second, it looks like. Are they meeting completely independently of the called Climate Action Committee?
Yes, uh, so we conduct monthly meetings. Uh, typically they're the first Monday of the month. And, um, Pam Adams is on that committee.
Okay.
It's on that committee, but that's the only connection, I guess, to the, to the cog. Otherwise, it's, uh, uh, they're pursuing a, an independent, develop, dependent of our own uh, greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategy, which is still developing. It's taken a little bit of time. It got waylaid, of course, uh, during the pandemic, but is reemerging with some new action steps, I guess, that they'll present in, uh, not, not too, not too far from now, hopefully.
Okay, so just, just to refer back to the cog climate action plan, which I got the, the detailed tour of at the committee uh, meeting I attended. Um, the, in there is a specific line, uh, like a big chunk of effort for municipal uh, facilities and grounds. So they're, they're doing our same, or isn't, wouldn't that be then the same work?
All, all I can really say about is my understanding of that distinction is they're going to focus on the municipal operation itself, whereas the township's charge has been broadened to include residents, businesses, farmers, et cetera. So it's a, it's a broader scope, I think, that is planned to be addressed through the township's greenhouse gas, uh, emissions reduction strategy than what's being focused on at the regional level. I, I think there, we're trying to, the, the two committees, they're trying to avoid duplication of efforts to the extent possible. And of course, Brittany Robinson sits on both committees as well. So, uh, they're pretty, um, I, I think they're in pretty good communication with one another. And we're trying not to step on each other's toes, too.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, thank you. And you had a topic that you wanted to bring up to the board.
Right, so, um, as you may recall, we've issued a request for proposals to update the Township Strategic Plan. Those are, that RFP proposals were due, uh, last Friday. So the next step, as described in the, uh, RFP that was issued, would be for a subcommittee, I guess, appointed to, uh, conduct interviews of the interested firms and the interviews would take place, uh, the week of August 23rd. So there's two ways you could do it. You could do it as a board. Um, but the, the difficulty that that introduces is it has to be done in a public, uh, meeting. Uh, what I'm proposing, what I'm requesting is that two members of the board, uh, volunteer to serve on this group along with myself, Centris and a, a member of the police department. And we conduct the screening and then make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for either the award of a contract or some other alternative, depending on, uh, what the committee is able to find out. So I was just going to leave that to the board if there are two that are interested in, in volunteering to serve on, uh, this subcommittee.
All right, so we've got, uh, call for two volunteers to serve on the subcommittee to interview um, our RFP for the strategic, strategic plan respondents, respondent. Well, I'd be happy to volunteer, but I don't want to take anybody's, um, you know, meeting time if they want it. Do we have any? Any volunteers?
Uh, I, I'm willing to do it, but I think it would be better if, uh, and we have two of the people who will be continuing through the end of the year who are interested. I mean, if, if not, then I am willing to do it, but, uh, I do think it would be better with someone continuing, but.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Hey, Donal. Donal, jump in once. So it looks like that might be myself and Steve, unless somebody else wants to volunteer.
Is this like a one meeting?
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect we'll need more than one meeting to conduct the interview, our interviews and then to, um, have some after meeting discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I can do it. I think Steve would be fine. He has a lot of, um,
Yeah.
knowledge.
Steve, you're not getting off the hook, buddy, it sounds like.
Why not? Well, thank you. I'll, I'll
That's fine.
Then to, to Centris or I'll reach out to you both, try to find a date that works for you next week and we'll keep things moving ahead. Uh, ideally, there'll be an item on the September 7th agenda for the board to consider awarding a, a contract. So we'll get started in short order. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Steve. Thank you all. Okay, we've got public, we've got other reports, Public Works, Planning and Zoning, Chief of Police. Uh, those folks are not present, but if we have any questions, uh, Dave will be happy to convey them. Do we have any other questions for any of the other reports, directors? Okay, looks like none. Uh, next up, communications to the board. Uh, do we have any communications that we want to talk about? All right, I think I only had one on my list. That, well, I had a couple. The rest of the board knows about all of them, except for maybe the road one that Lisa brought up. I, I'm not, I, I didn't get a chance to fully read that, uh, email, but my understanding is there's some concern that the gravel road um, is running through a recharge area and it's impermeable. And my understanding was the road was new, but from what Neil said, it was put in in like either 2011 or 2014. So if, if maybe your staff can follow up with that, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, looks like no other communications to the board. We've got our calendar items. Stormwater fee workshop coming up tomorrow and then we've got, uh, And then we've got most of our regular meetings listed there. Do you have anything that we wanted to just give a moment here if there's anything else before we call for a motion to adjourn? All right, well, I'd like to thank Prasangit for his service. This will be our last, our last meeting together, and I really, really appreciated your perspective and serving with you. And just thank you so very much for your, your time, your attention, your input and your, your, your care. So thank you.
Thank you. It has been a pleasure serving and I liked working with each and every one of you. And so, yeah, we'll cross paths, but this is a great board and we have great staff. So I'm, I'm very happy to see it in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Prasangit. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right. Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody. Thanks, Prasangit.
Yep, thanks.
Take care. Be around.